Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Vang will be absent this evening. Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Geta, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, and the Putwan-Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, that we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation of Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Please face the flag, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, a very good afternoon to everyone, to my colleagues, members of the city staff, most importantly, to members of the public that are here in chambers, those that are coming to chambers, and those who are watching this either on television or online. We know that we have a major discussion item here regarding the ceasefire question, but before that, we do have some other business. So I understand we're not going to make the special presentation this evening, so we move then right to, and I should announce that item 19 relating to weed and rubbish abatement, this is what the city does. It's a lot of different things here, but that will be continued to the 26th of March. And so that leaves us with commencing with the consent calendar. Are there any items that members would like to either hear separately, vote on separately, or discuss? I see Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, I have comments on item three.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Do we have public testimony, Madam Clerk, on the consent calendar?
Yeah, I have no speakers for the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved then and seconded. Councilmember Valenzuela on item three.
Thank you. Briefly, just because we were interrupted before I could give direction last time, I want to ask the city manager to please come back to us with a contract solicitation that will cover the design of a program for the, I just didn't put it in my notes because I was copying this over, the install program, the direct install program that the community proposed as part of the Act of Transportation Commission report. So a contract just for designing the program, but not for staff to implement, and what that cost estimate would be, rather than the 1.4 million in the staff report, is the tactical arbitrage program.
Right. So to be clear, you want us to come back with an estimate of what it would cost to prepare to implement while it's being proposed?
No, to design the program, but not to actually do the builds. So basically, to set forth the standards without actually staff. Staff's budget included the assumption that they were going to be installing the builds, and so I'd like to know what it would cost to design the program, but not to actually build that.
Would you like us to do a solicitation to figure that out? Because we can have an estimate of what it would be, but...
I think an estimate would be helpful to start.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, my second direction was just that, you know, regarding the annual report process, you know, I noted at last Tuesday's meeting that three different PNP committee members actually pulled those annual reports from consent for discussion items, which I know throws our agenda planning off route, and so I was hoping, Madam Clerk, when we update our policy and procedures, that it might be clear that if a member from PNP requests that an item come forward as a discussion item, that that request be honored, so that the public and the committees involved could obviously know what was expected of them when they come to council for their annual reports. And that was it for item three.
I just have one quick question on that. So when it comes out of PNP, the direction, if it's to have it heard on the discussion item, that's how you would want it heard?
Yes, yes. If a committee member requests an annual report be a discussion item rather than consent, that that request be honored.
Is it a committee member or a vote of the team?
A committee member, yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, we pull it from consent during the meetings, and I feel like that throws the whole process into turmoil. Yeah.
Okay.
Those are my requests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. The consent calendar passes. We now move to the discussion item.
Mr. Mayor, before we go there, may I have a motion to continue that weed abatement public hearing to March 26? Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Kaplan, a second by Jennings, and that is to continue the item to March 26.
Okay, to March 26. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That item is continued. All right, is that, are we ready to move now to the ceasefire discussion item? Okay, I'm going to turn the gavel over temporarily to the esteemed Vice Mayor, Lady Maples, and I'm going to make the presentation from down here. Thank you.
This thing hits my...
Please. Jay, would you step up here with me, please?
Quick question, Mayor Clerk, because I know generally our standard is when we start an item in regards to public comment, and I believe we still have individuals outside.
Yeah.
So I want to, I want to make it clear that if people are here to speak on it, that everybody gets a chance.
Absolutely.
So if at the point we can find out when nobody is waiting in line, then we know no longer to accept, you know, speaker slips, but I don't want anybody to get cut off because they're still waiting in line.
Yes, absolutely. So the plan is for any...
(applause)
If you need to speak, they can submit a speaker slip.
Madam Vice Mayor, I would be, I'd go a step farther. I know it's a long night, but I'd be willing to wait. I'd be waiting, I'd be willing to wait until everybody gets in here. I'd be waiting.
Good job, Gerald. Good job, Gerald. (audience cheering) That's the mayor of Sacramento. That's the mayor of Sacramento. Standing there. Standing there. So smart. So smart.
All right, so. All right.
Okay, so at this time, I will move an item up, taking council comments, questions, or ideas at this time. Do I have any members who want to speak on council comments, questions, ideas, event happenings? Councilmember Kaplan.
This Saturday, we're having a tree planting at North Natomas Regional Park, but it is also rolling into a community health fair. So if you've got time, come on out to the North Natomas Regional Park this Saturday to, one, plant trees, and, two, participate in a health fair that we are going to have out there.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other members? Councilmember Gera.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is to the city manager and our park staff. The parks' master plan is coming up for review. It's been, my understanding is that the timing of the release of the park master plan will be also at the same time as the YPSI Commission or Parks Commission will be reviewing it, which unfortunately doesn't give the commission enough time for them to comment and provide advice and recommendation to the council before we receive it. And so I'd like the city manager to consider looking at the appropriate timing of when we hear the parks' master plan, so that the commission has enough time to review and comment and provide recommendations to the council as an advisory body. Either we delay our review of it or, and provide more time for input. So that's a recommendation for the city manager. I'm not sure if you have comments on the parks' master plan release time.
I will check with staff, but if you're asking if we could, you know, hold off a week or two coming to the council, that shouldn't be an issue. I want to make sure, I check in with our staff to make sure there's not a time-sensitive issue there. And if not, that's not a problem.
No, thank you. And the sequencing that I hope we have is that when it's released, the commission has ample time to review and receive comment, give advice, and then we come out. And I do want to thank the recent outreach efforts that the city has done to get information out to the public about the parks' master plan. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
All right. Councilmember Talamontes.
So we asked the community for their input. You know, we're currently facing a budget deficit, and there is a community survey out there for you to fill out, to sign up, and to really make sure that your voices are heard. Also in the audience, we have the Golden Girls sponsor, and they recently came back from Colombia, South America, where they were award-winning. They're going to be hosting a fundraiser at the North Natomas Community Center Aquatics Facility. Proud to sponsor this event, so if you want to support our youth, please make sure to stop by on March 21st from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m.
All right. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much. I want the Sacramento community to know about a tradition that's been going on in Sacramento for many years, and it's going to take place on Saturday, March 23rd, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's going to take place at the Sam and Bonnie Pinnell Community Center in District 8, and I know Councilmember Vang would be making this announcement if I were not here, but in her absence, I just want to let you know to get ready for the 35th Annual Sweet Potato Festival. Now, if you make a great sweet potato, and I know you're getting ready to clap for that because you make a great sweet potato, you can still get into the contest, because we're going to have a great time out there judging who makes the best sweet potato pie. So the emcees for the event will be Sacramento's own Karen Massey, Terry Freeman-Moore, and Lee Perkins from 97.5 KDEE. We're going to have wonderful performances out there by Pastor Robinson and the Gospel Motivators, Tina B. and the Sacramento Soul Line dancers, the Black Forest Children's Music Director, Jerry Turner will be there, Miss Black Sacramento with the Scholarship Passion, just to name a few. But what you're really going to get when you come out is the greatest sweet potato that you've ever tasted in your life, and I will be one of the judges. So if you don't think the sweet potato is the best that you've ever tasted, you can blame me because I didn't cook it, but I was the one who judged it. But it's going to be a great time. So again, Saturday the 23rd from 10:00 to 4:00, come on out for the Sacramento 35th Annual Sweet Potato Festival.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. That sounds really exciting. We'll be there. And I just have one announcement to make, and that is that our Sacramento Youth Commission is partnering with Aggie Square to do a spring listening session. So this is going to be an opportunity for young people to come share their voices about the Aggie Square Project and the Community Benefits Agreement, how it's impacting them. So I hope that you will join us on March 20th at 4:30 p.m. at West Campus High School that's located at 5022 58th Street in Sacramento. And at this time, we still have folks that are waiting to come in, so we will take a 10-minute recess while we wait for folks to come in and settle in, so everybody has an opportunity to sit down and submit a speaker slip. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Darrell. Stop standing over here like you care about anyone over here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now begin with item 20 with a presentation by Mayor Steinberg. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor and my colleagues. I would like to invite up here, if it is okay, essentially to be co-presenters with me, Basim Alkara, the Director of CARE Sacramento Valley, Tafik Maroor, the Attorney and former CARE Board Member, Maquis Sowez, Community Advocate, with and for the Palestinian-American community. I'd also like to invite, on this side, Jay Shinir, a Jewish community leader and former council member, Rabbi Seth Castleman, and Judy Hyman, a member and leader of the Sacramento Jewish community. If you would all come on up and join me, please, as I make my presentation, then with the vice chair's permission, to then turn it over to each of them for brief comments before we begin public testimony.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for being here. Members of the city council and members of our Sacramento community, today, let us strive for peace, both in the Middle East and here in our beloved city. Those who point out that the city council has no purview over a war thousands of miles away are correct. We don't. But this resolution is not about Sacramento, this resolution is not about the Middle East so much. This resolution is about Sacramento. For the events in the Middle East have deeply divided our community and fractured our proud history of interfaith solidarity. Many Sacramentoans are also deeply affected by the conflict because they have family members and friends in Gaza and in Israel. The resolution is important in expressing our community's values. Maybe even more important is whether tonight, and in the succeeding days, weeks, and months, our community, especially our interfaith communities, can begin talking with one another again, gently, with compassion, with understanding, and acknowledgement of the impact the war continues to have on our Jewish, Palestinian, and Muslim communities here in Sacramento. There is, in fact, tremendous fear, disagreement, and trauma on all sides of this divide. It is all real and very understandable. And yet, we must answer for ourselves and our city. What comes next? We are not at war with each other here in Sacramento. We are not at war with each other in Sacramento. We have a long history of strong interfaith relationships. The Muslim-American and Palestinian-American community stood with the synagogues when we were firebombed back in 1999, and the Jewish community in Sacramento stood with the Muslim-American and Palestinian communities after 9/11, when they were victims of stereotyping and discrimination. And there are a dozen other examples that I could cite here tonight of where our communities have stood with and for each other. These bonds have been tested, and in some ways, they have been damaged over these past months. Only we, together, can change that. Tonight represents a real effort to try to do just that. This resolution has not divided our community, it has not created division in our city. It has exposed the divisions that already exist, and we have an obligation as leaders, no matter our walk of life, to try to make it better. This resolution calls for a bilateral ceasefire between Israel and Gaza. It fully, it fully acknowledges the death and the suffering of thousands of innocent people in Gaza, the horrific atrocities against the Jewish people on October the 7th. It calls for the immediate release of hostages and Palestinians in Israeli jails that have not been charged with crimes. It calls for a free and independent Palestinian state, and with the support of Muslim leadership, pretty unprecedented, actually, acknowledges the need for a safe and secure Israel. It calls for humanitarian relief in Gaza. It decries antisemitism and Islamophobia, and it specifically calls for new leadership on both sides. That means Hamas and Netanyahu. That shouldn't be that controversial. We must answer for ourselves and our city. Among the division, among the fear, and among the trauma, what comes next? We have a long history, as I said, of interfaith relationships, and so there is only one way forward tonight and in the days ahead. Please, everyone, listen with an open heart to every speaker, even if they say something that you disagree with. Testify with passion, of course, consistent with your beliefs, but also respect for others who have a different point of view. Try to see beyond the words you don't like in the resolution, and focus on the words that affirm your values and beliefs. The resolution, as I just described, is comprehensive and fair. It's not, as some of the opponents on any side will characterize it. Some on all sides will argue that it unfairly equates the causes and suffering between the Palestinian and Jewish people. I strongly disagree. And this is not about judging equivalency. Who are we to do that? It's about common suffering that continues to affect thousands of people from all sides in our city and in our community. There are many voices in our proud Jewish community here in Sacramento, and tonight you will hear from friends, from some Jewish organizations who oppose the resolution because they believe it is not supportive enough of Israel. Other voices from the Jewish community, called the Jewish Left, may oppose because they believe it is not critical enough of Israel. The people, the people who are standing beside me, and many others in this room and in the community, are also leaders of our Jewish community, and here and are here in favor of this balanced and principled compromise. I believe, and I've been elected how many times since 1992, I believe strongly that their voices represent the majority of people in our Jewish community and in our entire city. Excuse me. Meanwhile, there are also dissenting voices in the Muslim and Palestinian communities, and we will hear from them as well tonight. We can get through all of this together with everyone being heard, and that is the goal. And then to have a fair discussion and debate and take a vote. But if anyone who agrees or disagrees with the resolution chooses to shout down and prevent people from talking, we will ask them reluctantly to leave the chambers and recess if necessary. If they won't leave and continue to disrupt, we will be forced then ultimately to clear our chambers. And so if anyone chooses to disrupt, that leads to the clearing of the chambers, that will deprive hundreds of people from being heard in this city council chamber and from speaking their truth. I do not want that, and nobody wants that. We will vote up or down tonight, either way, because these issues must be brought to a resolution. To have to shut down this meeting, which I hope does not happen because any group or individual doesn't like the direction or the outcome, would be unfortunate, and it would be anti-democratic. We, 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 we are not enemies, but friends. We must not be enemies, said our most famous president. Please try tonight to hear each other, to respect the process, and to respect the outcome. Thank you very much. Ready to hear from some of my co-presenters. Go ahead.
The last time I, the first time I came here was October 17th. It was about 10 days after everything that happened on October 7th, and I've been coming on and off in the last five months, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us today, not only myself, but everybody here who was in attendance. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Over five months ago, myself with two other Palestinian-Arab Muslim-American women embarked on an endeavor to draft a ceasefire resolution and engage in dialogues with the mayor to ensure it's in consideration and adoption. The process has entailed extensive and continuous exchanges spanning the course of those five months. The original objective of this resolution was to advocate for a ceasefire aimed at halting the ongoing massacre and violence, and to facilitate unrestricted humanitarian aid to civilians in need, especially with the starvation crisis currently occurring. Since October 7th, more than 35,000 innocent lives, encompassing mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, grandmothers, grandfathers, have been killed and massacred, including family members of some of people within our own Sacramento community. This staggering toll amounts to nearly 250 fatalities per day. In the face of such devastation, the discriminatory responses from the opposing government would could not passively observe, we could not passively observe, the current events unfold. We refuse to await the actions of others or simply hope for a favorable outcome. Undoubtedly, this journey has met, has been met with challenges heightened by the profound differences between the involved parties. Nevertheless, amidst these disparities, this differences, sorry, Ramadan brain, we reached a common understanding, the imperativeness of upholding the humanity and amplifying the call for a immediate ceasefire. While acknowledging that perfection is hard to achieve, we recognize the inherent imperfections of this resolution. Certain aspects resonate strongly within our community, others fail to fully capture the realities on the ground. I urge us all to remain steadfast in our commitment to advancing the cause of peace and justice, not only today, but every day. Let us continue to raise our voices in solidarity and pursue avenues for meaningful dialogue and resolution. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, members of the council, I want to thank you for the time tonight. I'm here representing myself, and I'm here because this is such a critical issue to our community as a whole over time. I want to acknowledge and recognize how difficult this has been for individuals and organizations on all sides of the issue. We're certainly not the first community who's had to wrestle with this issue. I hope we're the last, but we won't be the last. This will continue to happen across the country. Also, I want to recognize the challenges that there have been with the process that's got us here today, but here is where we are, and so for me, it's how do we deal with it and move forward for the good of all. I don't know how tonight will turn out. I don't do that anymore. But whether this resolution passes or fails, I hope and pray that what got us here today opens the door to a deepening relationship between the Muslim, Palestinian, and Jewish communities here in Sacramento. And also, that should include folks who are not immediately involved, but who are looking at this issue as something that's important to them. It's important for the humanity of our city and how we are looked at and how we look at our city. While I doubt that this resolution or any actions for that matter, any of our actions for that matter, will have a determining impact on what happens in the Middle East, it can and should have an impact here in Sacramento. It just seems to me that as we fight growing antisemitism on one side here, and our Muslim friends fight against, and our Palestinian friends fight against Islamophobia, we would be stronger taking action together. Two are always better than one. My hope is that we each make a commitment to the other, that however tonight turns out, we work together for a better Sacramento. Together, I hope we can work towards creating a community that our children, and our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren want to live in. Where living and working together is the norm and not just the exception. I am personally willing to make that commitment. I hope you are as well. We start now. Thank you.
Dear City Council, City Manager, as Sacramentoans, we stand together today, people of all backgrounds, of all faiths, to stand for a ceasefire. Sacramento is a community that always comes together to support each other during challenging times. Today, we come together to stand for a ceasefire, to stand for human dignity, to call for an end to the violence, immediate aid into Gaza, the release of over 100 hostages held in Gaza, and the thousands of Palestinian prisoners in Israeli jails, including children. This resolution does this and much more. It recognizes that situation on the ground doesn't just impact Palestinians and Israelis. It recognizes that situation on the ground doesn't just impact Palestinians and Israelis, but also affects us Arabs, Muslims, Christians, and Jews right here in Sacramento. It required each community to recognize the pain that the other is going through, and the language of the resolution shows this. It demands that all residents and community members recognize the pain of our community. The Islamophobia, the anti-Palestinian and anti-Arab sentiments that our community is experiencing, and the antisemitism that the Jewish community is experiencing, are something that we cannot, that we cannot accept and cannot be tolerated. As someone who has directly suffered the consequences of the ongoing crisis in Gaza, losing over 76 family members, losing our family's home, losing our cemeteries where my ancestors are buried, I thank Mayor Steinberg for bringing together the community to push through this resolution. Behind the scenes, he has worked tirelessly to make this happen by serving as a bridge between communities. This resolution is not perfect. It doesn't have all the details we wanted. In negotiations, we don't always get what we want. However, this resolution has a strong and clear call for a ceasefire, which is the primary goal. This resolution calling for a ceasefire is important and symbolic, as it will, it will apply pressure on our federal leaders to act quickly to save innocent lives on all sides. This is Sacramento, the capital city of the most powerful state and the most powerful country. Sacramento, the nation is watching. I, along with countless other residents of Sacramento, have been personally impacted by this bloodshed. Calling for a ceasefire today is not a political gesture. It is a necessary humanitarian intervention, and the first step towards ending the horrific violence and securing the relief of hostages in Gaza and political prisoners in Israel. Calling for a ceasefire today is also significant steps for our communities, Muslim, Christian, and Jewish, that our mutual desire for humanity and peace is something that can only be realized through discussion and dialogue. Only then can we start to take the necessary steps to achieve a just and lasting peace for all people in the region. Today, we stand side by side to call for peace.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Council Members, and fellow Sacramentoans. My name is Judy Hyman, and I'm a member of the Sacramento Jewish Community. I'm speaking for myself as an individual, but I will mention that the ecomments for this item include a letter of support from more than 50 members of the Jewish community who support this item for similar reasons as mine. I support the proposed resolution, in the hope that it can help build greater understanding and compassion in our city about this, the very painful and complicated situation in Israel and Gaza. My support for this action is an expression of my Jewish values. It is a call for de-escalation of violence, in the spirit of "Bitzalem Elohim," that we are all created in the image of God. This is a rejection of efforts to dehumanize one side or the other. It is a call to honor the humanity in each of us, both in Israel and Gaza, and here in Sacramento. It is a call to engage in a long-term, non-military solution, addressing the root causes of injustice and inequity in Israel and Palestine, in a manner that honors the humanity of all people who live there. It is a call for solidarity, a call for life. Thank you.
Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Maples, Mayor Pearl Temtalamontes, and respected members of the City Council, I greet you with a greeting of peace. Assalamu alaikum. May peace be upon you all. My name is Tofik Marar, and I'm a Muslim-American, a Palestinian-American, and I've been a proud resident of Sacramento for the past 34 years. I was raised in Sacramento, studied in Sacramento, did my college studies in Sacramento, my law school in Sacramento, I got married in Sacramento, and I have an office in Sacramento. So this resolution affects me right here in Sacramento. The Middle East conflict between the Israelis and Palestinians began decades ago. We know that. We're not here to debate that. But since the October 7th attacks and the subsequent Israeli war on the Gaza Strip, myself, my family, hundreds of people in this room, as I'm sure you'll hear shortly, have been impacted severely. We shed tears every day, as we watch child after child, woman after woman, grandmother after grandmother, and grandfather after grandfather, lose their lives because of the Israeli war in Gaza. We stayed glued to our phones, our televisions, looking for some kind of hope and miracle that will find some kind of reprieve for the people in the Gaza Strip. Many of us have contributed funds to countless humanitarian causes, to help the innocent civilians stuck in the middle of this war. Thousands of us have taken to the streets in demonstration, to express our disapproval with our federal government's support of this war. For months, we've demanded that our elected officials in Washington DC used our power and influence to call for a ceasefire, to end the suffering of the people, the death and despair of all innocent civilians stuck on both sides of this war. And today, we're here to ask you to do the same. I'm sure if you ask the average person in this room, you'll hear that the proposed resolution before you doesn't go, doesn't go far enough on some issues. Maybe it goes too far on some issues, has a lot of flaws in it. I agree with all those sentiments. Yes, it's not a perfect resolution, but it's a discussion we have to have. This resolution was a result of months of discussions, debate, and yes, at times, severe deadlock, about what's needed in the long term and in the short term to address the situation on the ground. It was a result of 7:00 AM phone calls, 11:00 PM Zoom calls, and countless in-person discussions between. In the short term, it's straightforward. We seek an immediate and permanent end to the violence and bloodshed. We want humanity to prevail over hatred, and peace to prevail over the profits of war. We seek that all persons, held unjustly and illegally, whether it's the Israelis held hostage in the Gaza Strip, or the thousands of Palestinians held without charge in Israeli jails, be released. We seek that our government does everything in its power to facilitate the unrestricted entry of humanitarian aid, medical supplies, food, nutrition, and shelter, to the millions of people in the Gaza Strip, so that they can have hope to survive the following day. But this resolution even goes a step further in that. The resolution calls for the people of Sacramento to stand as one body to call for the end to this war. It calls for all of us to stand side by side, against any form of bigotry and discrimination, be it Islamophobia or anti-Arab sentiments on one side, or the antisemitism affecting some of our Jewish community members on the other side. It calls for each other, it calls for us all to acknowledge each other's humanity. I'm sure if you ask every person in this room, they will have a different view as to what the resolution should be, or the ultimate solution to how we could solve this conflict in the Middle East. But I'll leave you with two points. What we seek is a preservation of innocent and precious life. And the second point is a saying from our beloved Prophet Muhammad, the Prophet of Islam, who says, "If you see an injustice, then change it with your hand, by taking action. If you cannot change it with your hand, then change it with your tongue, by speaking out against it. If you cannot change it with your tongue, then change it with your heart, by praying for the oppressed, for the oppressed and for those on the ground." You all have a chance that it takes some form of action against an injustice, perhaps one of the most egregious injustices we've seen in our lifetime. Thank you very much.
Madam Vice Mayor, City Council, my name is Rabbi Seth Castleman. I've worked in Sacramento for over 10 years, and I support this resolution. I support the state of Israel, I support the state of Palestine, may it happen, and I support peace. The Jewish values I aim to teach my children are not the values of hate, vengeance, and violence, but rather some of the most central Jewish values: to protect life, that we are all created in God's image, and that we should love our neighbor as none other than ourselves. These values instruct us to condemn the violence of October 7th. These values teach us to call for bilateral ceasefire. These values implore us to demand far more aid be flowing into Gaza. These values also speak to the strong interfaith community here in Sacramento, a community that largely stands behind this resolution. I do not see the dividing line as between Muslim and Jew, between Israeli and Palestinian, but rather the dividing line is between those that are for peace, and those that are for violence and war. I ask that you vote positively for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you to all of the co-presenters. I think that it is appropriate, with Vice Chair's permission, that we begin the public testimony. I do think I just want to sum up, by repeating again, that there, as Tofik Marar said, "There is enough in this resolution for every community to like, and to affirm one's position and values." And there is enough in the resolution to create discomfort and even disagreement. That's the nature of principled compromise, and I remind everybody again, that the resolution not only calls for the bilateral ceasefire, immediate and permanent, but decries the death and suffering of thousands of innocents in Gaza, and calls for immediate humanitarian relief. It also condemns specifically the horrific atrocities by Hamas against innocent people in Israel on October 7th, and calls for the immediate release of hostages. It calls for a Palestinian state, and it calls for a safe and secure Israel. Thank you. Let's start public comment.
Thank you to our presenters.
Thank you all.
Madam City Clerk, do we have members of the public to speak on this item?
Um, yes, Vice Mayor, I have 82 speaker slips. I will read off a couple, and then we'll get started. Shadi Quatib, Rabbi Seth Castleman, Rabbi Susan Conforti, Dr. Umar Waris. We do have quite a few people, so if you wouldn't mind lining up in the middle aisle. So Shadi?
Yeah, yes, 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 yes.
Please proceed.
Thank you, fellow council members. Back in February 6th, I had shared with this council that each day, nearly 200 people were killed since the siege began. 160 days in, I am saddened to update the council that the number has now exceeded 250 per day. For perspective, this is equivalent to 5,000 Californians dying each and every day. Meanwhile, it's taken nearly five and a half months to reach a resolution that unfortunately needs amendments. The most glaring disturbing is the sixth passage, where it is stating, "The city of Sacramento condemns the weaponizing of sexual violence is never acceptable in war or otherwise." Who in their right mind believes this is acceptable, or for that matter, needs to be a focal point of a ceasefire resolution? This has no place, as such words implicate your constituents to know, to not know right from wrong. If such usage is in fact deemed acceptable, then where is the call out of weaponization of starvation? Which we are clearly seeing in all, in real time. I request that you strike this statement from the resolution. Next, the third passage states hundreds of Israeli hostages, which is factually incorrect. It is stated in New York Times and Times of Israel to be 130. This statement should be reflected for accuracy to over 100, as it currently undermines the scaled brutality when compared to each responsible party. Finally, the first resolved passage lists four key simultaneous elements needed for a ceasefire. There should be five simultaneous elements, the fifth being the immediate release of all Palestinians held without charge or trial in Israeli prisons. Calling for a release is not the same as demanding a release of those held without trial. I urge you to take these amendments into consideration. Thank you for your time.
I'm Chaplain Rabbi Susan Conforti. My mother survived Auschwitz and Bergen-Belsen concentration camps in World War II, where she met the sisters Anne and Margot Frank. After the war, the Jewish community of Louisville, Kentucky, put up sponsorship funds, which allowed my mother, an immigrant with no money and who spoke no English, to be able to immigrate to the United States and one day become a citizen. I'm proud to be Jewish, and proud to be an American and a Californian. Here, like nowhere else on earth, we have a marvelous diversity of nationalities, and religions, and languages. Here, we can stand together with people of goodwill and speak our minds. Here, we can build, maintain, and strengthen community, build bridges across divides, and speak out for the release of hostages and for the protections of civilians. I don't speak for all Jews or all rabbis, but I do stand with all Jews everywhere, as I yearn for peace with Arabs of all religions, and Muslims of every country. May that desire for peace be what we teach our children and our grandchildren. Members of the board, I urge you to vote yes on Mayor Steinberg's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rabbi Seth Castleman?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Did we have Shadi speak? Okay, Shadi, thank you. Dr. Umar Waris, Lynn Berkeley Basken, Matthew Woodward.
People can line up, if, if you would like, as the names are being called. Thank you.
Respected Mayor, and respected Council members, good afternoon. My name is Umar Waris. I am a physician in the community, and I'm also a board member for the Greater Sacramento Muslim Public Affairs Committee, which has been dedicated for the past few months for mobilizing the grassroots Muslim community to be an active participant in the elections, as well as the political process, particularly in light of the tragedy ongoing in Gaza at this time. And I want to say that for the past few months, as what many are calling a genocide has been unfolding, many of us have been looking for our elected officials to take a stand, to call for a ceasefire. And I'm grateful for the steps that have been taken by this council and by the mayor today. And I do feel that there are ways that the resolution could also be stronger, in the ways that it was highlighted in the amendments that were spoken to earlier by one of the earlier speakers as well. But nonetheless, I do want to recognize that this resolution is at least a start. It calls for a bilateral ceasefire. It calls for the release of hostages. It calls for the release of prisoners unjustly held, and it calls for Palestinian statehood as well. Lastly, Mayor, as we are in this process of hopefully, as you have called for healing and bringing the community together, I wanted to also bring your attention to the fact that the Muslim community will be hosting a Palestine exhibit, to bring attention to the history of Palestine, and I hope that you all could be a part of those as well in the future. I thank you for your time.
Council members, colleagues, and family in the Jewish community, Palestinian and Muslim friends, partners and organizers in the community at large, I speak today as an individual, not representing my position in the Jewish community. Many in my Jewish community will see my presence here today as a betrayal. I've spent the greater part of 30 years serving my Jewish community in leadership positions, and almost the same in anti-hate, anti-racism, liberative community at both the grassroots and treetops. I speak loudly in the support of this proposed resolution today, not because it is wholly accurate. It is not. It certainly does not tell the whole story. A resolution can't possibly represent the fear, anguish, and oppression experienced in the region's story, in that region's story. I support this resolution today not because it dampens the flames of legitimate fears felt in Israel and Gaza, and of our diasporic peoples here in our home of the Sacramento region. This includes Jews, Muslims, Israelis, and Palestinians. But because this resolution is largely symbolic of the importance of reflecting on inhumanity, the pain of one another, especially in moments of collective tragedy, I cannot walk away from this expression of local unity. It is important that history reflects that leaders of the local Jewish community supported the spirit of this effort, to prioritize an end to violence, support humane responses to suffering, nurture local solidarity, and hold fast to the relationships we continue to build. Regardless of the inadequate, inadequate and incomplete statements in this resolution, the final three stated resolves are where we have the greatest power to actually stated resolves are where we have the greatest power to actualize this resolution. Please read the final three resolves. I’ve run out of time.
Thank you for your comments. Matthew Woodward, then Amira Sagar?
Mayor Steinberg and members of council, I am the very Reverend Matthew Woodward. I am the Dean of Trinity Episcopal Cathedral here in Sacramento. I’m speaking as a pastor and Episcopalian and a person of faith. I didn’t write the words in the opening clauses of the resolution. I know each of us might have composed them differently, but I see in them immense pain. Friends and colleagues are in pain, and I’m grieving with them. As an Episcopalian, we vow in our baptismal covenant that we will respect the dignity of every human being. Since October the 7th, dignity has not been afforded to those killed, assaulted, made hostages, or to innocent lives caught up in this conflict. I’m praying that we find the strength to respect the dignity of every human being, Jewish and Palestinian and Muslim, which extends to the interactions here tonight and in the city of Sacramento. This is my prayer. As a person of faith, I have to hope that resolution is possible. I hope that this body making this decision will further a public conversation about how we might move away from this cycle of violence. I agree with the actions the resolution calls for: a bilateral ceasefire, an end to the violence, a return of hostages and prisoners held without charge, a resumption of all humanitarian aid, and fresh eyes in leadership to see the path towards a stable peace for all. I ask that you approve this resolution.
Ladies and gentlemen, since October 7th, over thirty-five thousand innocent civilians have, and even some of our own family members, have been killed due to the collective punishment of Palestinians by the Israeli government. The first week of November, a few of us, which included Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim-American women, took on the initiative as individuals to draft a ceasefire resolution. I think it’s crucial to understand that while we may have clear beliefs about what should occur, the complexities of politics and the realities of the world often limit our options. We must focus on what actions we can take within these constraints. As a Palestinian-American, I urge everyone to look at the bigger picture. We are never going to get a resolution that strictly stands for everything that we want. I know it’s not perfect, trust me, I know. And as we have seen, even people within their own communities have a difference of opinion. While we acknowledge that this resolution may not align with all of our points of view, passing it is, passing it as a step towards adding pressure for a call for a permanent ceasefire and increased humanitarian aid is crucial. It sets a precedent that can pressure other cities to follow suit, creating a domino effect that ultimately puts pressure at the federal level. Each step forward, no matter how small, contributes to the larger goal of peace and justice for all the affected communities. We must keep our eyes open on the long-term goal and avoid being short-sighted. The decisions we make today will impact generations to come. So let us stand united and, let us stand united in our commitment to the lasting peace, to lasting peace and justice. We have always tried to advocate and keep everything from, for a humanitarian standpoint since the beginning. This resolution calls for a permanent ceasefire, ensuring unrestricted humanitarian aid reach the Palestinians, and the release of Palestinian prisoners held unjustly and without charge, which is more than any other city in the U.S. has called for in their past resolutions. Thank you.
Free to line up in the middle aisle. Gordon Dean, Marian Leff, Jamil Murar, Eileen Jacobowitz. Gordon?
Gordon is outside.
So Gordon, if you’ll come in and line up, and if you’ll introduce yourself, then I can move past.
Good evening. My name is Jamil Murar. I am a board member of the Masjid al-Nur Islamic Center in Sacramento. Mr. Mayor, respected council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinion in this meeting. Looking at the latest numbers of the people killed in Gaza, there has been nearly thirty-two thousand people killed as of today. Twenty-five thousand of them are women and children. Seventy-four thousand people injured. Ten thousand people still under the rebels, and they did not take them out yet. Total number of the victims in Gaza is one thousand, one hundred sixteen thousand victims. This is four-point-six percent of the total population of Gaza, of two-and-a-half million people. To apply this number here against our population in the United States, that will give us sixteen million victims. To apply it against the Israeli population, that will give us close to half a million victims. This is genocide, no matter how we explain it, no matter how we define it. We expect you, as our representative, to be on the right side of history and help save the injured and starving children of Gaza. Vote yes, please, on this resolution, and join us in sending a strong message to our leaders in Washington to do the same. The country proudly says, our country proudly says, “We are the leader of the free world,” but we have since became eleven stuck, sadly. When hundred-and-fifty-three countries voted for a ceasefire, we stood shamelessly against the rest of the world and vetoed three ceasefires. Mayor and council members, I urge you, please, to vote yes on the ceasefire resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and city council members, for your commitment to the work you do on behalf of the city of Sacramento. It’s no easy job. My name is Marian Leff, and I am co-president of the Jewish Federation of the Sacramento Region, a nonprofit organization. We represent the greater Jewish population in our region. However, our members are not a homogenous community, far from it. We can have, and we do have, differing views on many issues. This resolution is no exception. We met with members of the Muslim community to attempt to craft an acceptable resolution for both the Muslim and Jewish community with strong opinions. We discussed with and heard from many leaders in our community with strong opinions regarding this ceasefire resolution in Gaza. At the end of the day, we could not agree on the language presented before you as the best compromise. We respect the heartfelt intent and reasoning of our mayor, who we count as a member of our Jewish community in bringing this resolution forward, but we respectfully disagree that it will achieve its aim. In fact, we believe there are significant consequences of this resolution should it pass. We fear for the safety of our community. Our own Jewish community is torn. We fear for the disruption of fragile relationships with the Muslim community. Massive uptick in both antisemitic and Islamophobic events nationwide are not quelled by a resolution that will have no impact on the outcome of the war between Israel and Hamas, nor is it the business of our city council, but should be left to those with expertise in foreign matters. I regret to say, we must therefore oppose the resolution. We in the Jewish and Muslim communities have experienced excruciating pain and grief since October 7th. We are committed to furthering the dialogue with the Jewish and Muslim communities, and we will seek out such opportunities as we envision a more peaceful Sacramento for all its citizens.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eileen, then Deborah Hoffman Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Jacobowitz, and I am a member of the non-homogenous Jewish community here in Sacramento. I’m a proud Jew, and I’m a proud Sacramentan, and I’m here tonight in support of the resolution for an immediate bilateral ceasefire in Gaza. While the resolution will not resolve anything in the Middle East, this is, this carefully and collaboratively crafted resolution reflects a very important Jewish ideal: shalom baiit. Shalom meaning peace, and baiit meaning house. We need this resolution to advance shalom baiit, peace between neighbors in our shared Sacramento home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Deborah Hoffman Gonzalez, then Gordon Dean.
My name is Deborah Gonzalez. I’m a resident of Sacramento County who works and recreates in the city of Sacramento, and I do not support this resolution. In 2019, when I was president of the Jewish Federation, I had the honor of meeting with the mayor of Sacramento’s sister city, Ashkelon. Ashkelon is a town booming with industry and immigration. On any street corner, you can hear Hebrew, Arabic, Russian, Ukrainian, Amharic, French, and English. It’s forecasted to have the largest growth in Israel in terms of both population and businesses. It has the largest reverse osmosis desalinization plant in the world. These are the things we learned when we met with the mayor. We also toured the three bomb shelters that Sacramento’s Jewish community had donated the previous year. Ashkelon is the largest metropolitan area closest to the Gaza Strip. It’s an old town, biblically old, and none of the old apartment complexes are equipped with bomb shelters. Since 2008, it has been the target of rockets being launched from nearby Gaza. Imagine West Sacramento shooting rockets into Midtown or Elk Grove shooting missiles into Land Park. The rockets and missiles launched from Gaza are weapons illegally smuggled into the Gaza Strip. The Hamas government diverted humanitarian funds to build tunnels used for smuggling and purchasing weapons. I object to the resolution because I think a U.S. city has no business commenting on something taking place half a world away. And if you want to get into the weeds, there was a ceasefire October 6th. What good that did. A temporary ceasefire is necessary to free the hostages, but until the terrorist government is out of power, another ceasefire will only give them more time to rebuild and restock. If this city council is going to spend time and energy away from the citizens who elected them, I would suggest reaching out to their sister city, who have been victims of the violence. I’m heading to Israel Sunday. I would be happy to bring along your good wishes and any tangible help this city council is interested in providing that can truly make a difference. This divisive resolution is not that, and I would be embarrassed to share with the mayor of Ashkelon.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gordon Dean.
Everyone gets a, everyone gets a chance to speak. Everyone, please.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Joffe Black, and I live in District 6. I’m an active member of the Jewish community here in Sacramento. I want the council to know that it is possible to support Israel’s right to exist and to support a ceasefire. Existence does not necessitate bombing civilians, even if those civilians are being used as human shields. And those of us who do support Israel have the obligation, that is, to demand that Israel live up to international standards of morality and human rights. I want my Palestinian and Muslim neighbors to know that there are Jews, like me, who pray in synagogues here, who see your pain and the pain and needless suffering of your family members in Gaza. Like many other Jews, I don’t believe that bombing civilians is morally acceptable under any circumstance. I cannot stomach the Jewish Federation’s characterization of Israel’s response as justified. Since when is it justified to starve a million people just to exist? The Jewish Federation does not represent me on their characterization that this is not a local issue either. I believe that years from now, our children and grandchildren will ask us, “What did you do when one million Palestinian children were on the brink of starvation and when Benjamin Netanyahu was going to invade Rafa?” What will our answer be? Will it be that we let ourselves off the hook and decided that this issue was not under the council’s jurisdiction? Or will we say we did everything we could to protect life, even when the actions were symbolic? We took symbolic actions because that’s how we send messages to our federal leaders to take further action. That’s how we demonstrate our principles. That’s how we teach our children, and that is how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Inden Haya Akkad?
Good evening. My name is Gordon Dean. I’m a public school teacher and a member of Congregation Bene Israel, and I’m here speaking just for myself. No one is happy with what is happening, and this solution will not fix that. This resolution is an attempt by Sacramentoans to preserve the bonds that we have here in Sacramento. We must face the history that has brought us here, but we must have the courage to see a way forward. There is no way to get from here to there except by joining hands and going together. That is why I urge the members of this city council to vote in favor of this joint resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Before speaker, I just want to gently remind everyone that we can’t have shouting out. We have to let everybody speak, and, and the shouting out will only prevent everybody from speaking. And so, it’s calm, it’s good. Everyone is being heard, and everyone will be heard. Thank you.
Next speaker is Haya, then Dan Weitzman.
Hello. I stand before you today not just as a witness to the tragedy happening in Gaza, but as a voice for change, for action, and for justice. We face countless of hurdles, internal disagreements, and external pressures. But through it all, one thing has remained crystal clear: this resolution is overdue, and we need to call for a ceasefire and unrestricted humanitarian aid. This resolution does that. The situation in Gaza right now is beyond dire, but let’s not forget the blockade imposed by the Israeli government that has turned Gaza into an open-air prison well before October 7th, where basic necessities are scarce commodities. Millions of innocent lives are trapped in a cycle of suffering, with over fifty percent of the population under the age of eighteen, a generation born in captivity and deprived of their most basic fundamental rights. We cannot afford to stand by and watch this humanitarian crisis unfold before our eyes. It is time to take action now. There are aspects of this resolution that I personally disagree with, but in the grand scheme of things, it is a step in the right direction, a step toward ending the bloodshed, a step toward the stop to the violence, and towards giving the Palestinian people a chance of life that they rightfully deserve. So I urge everyone to stand in solidarity today, to stand in solidarity with the people of Gaza, and stand with us in demanding an end to the suffering, the violence, and a shared commitment to justice and humanity. Together, we can make a difference. Together, we can build a future where peace prevails. The time for action is now. Thank you for considering this resolution, and thank you, council members, for listening to everyone here. Please remember that the loudest people in the room don’t represent our community. Our community wants peace, and our community wants an end to the killing and end to the violence. Thank you.
Once again, once again, please, 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 let everybody speak, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for giving me the opportunity to speak here. You know, I’m here to support the efforts of our mayor and the city council to try to bring us back together. We have clearly had a horrible, horrific thing happen in the Middle East for seventy years. What happened on October 7th is horrific, and there is no call for that to ever be denied. There’s no justification for it, and there is nothing we can go back on. But we, as a Sacramento community, have to be courageous. I have watched council meeting after council meeting be interrupted and destroyed over this issue. We must seek peace. That doesn’t mean that Israel doesn’t have the right to do what they done. It doesn’t mean that Palestine doesn’t have the right to have their own state. What it means is, we as a community, not there, but here, need to bring ourselves back together. This has been an amazing community. I’ve lived here for thirty years. We march together, we cry together, we talk together, because we’re together. And we, as a community, have been broken over this issue. I’ve watched these council meetings get stopped and stopped. It’s time to do something different. It’s time for us to step up. I’m not sure this will solve anything, and I’m not clear anything will happen of this, but I’ll tell you one thing: doing nothing has proven to do horrible things for this city. We have to build housing. We have to take care of our homeless. We have to take care of our streets. We need to move this agenda forward. And if maybe, just maybe, this resolution brings us to a place where we can have more conversations, we can have more dialogue, and we can bring people together, then maybe, just maybe, it’s a good opportunity. I’m not sure it’s going to work. Maybe the temperature goes down ten degrees, but that ten degrees might bring us a little better place. So I support peace, and I support this community coming together, and it’s hard for me, but I believe this resolution is the best we’re going to have for now.
And next speaker is Omar Altamimi, Bruce Pratt, Ezra Lipp. Omar Altamimi, Bruce Pratt, Ezra Lipp, and then Michael Dean.
Perfect. Today, hello, everyone. My name is Omar Altamimi. Thank you all for being here. I’m the Senior Policy and Advocacy Coordinator at CARE Sacramento Valley in Central California. Today- Today, I'm not really here to speak to you as an advocate or anything more than just who I am as a human being alongside every other person in this room. I won't even begin by addressing this resolution. I want to start by kind of sharing my own thoughts coming into this room and the suffering that we've seen. I don't have children of my own. Maybe one day, there will be smaller versions of me wreaking havoc on the world. But I know many of you have children. I know many people in the crowd have children and families. And none of us here would want our children or our families in Gaza today. None of us would want our districts to be bombed, our hospitals, our schools to be bombed or attacked. Nor would any of you have wanted your children present in Gaza or Israel on October 7th. We wouldn't have wanted our districts turned to rubble or our infrastructure targeted and bombed. And if we don't want unnecessary death and destruction here, then our humanity mandates us to not stand by and watch as this reality takes place elsewhere. If for no other reason than just that one reason, let your shared humanity be the reason that you stand with the ceasefire resolution and why it needs to pass today. For our communities here, this resolution is a starting point, by no means is an ending point. People have spoken to all the issues, all the issues they could find, all the issues they'd want to find. But ultimately, and I agree with Tofik on this, there's one part of this resolution every person in this room will agree with at least one part of this resolution and walk away with that. Even if they don't have to agree with every other part of it, they'll find that one piece that allows them to live with it and agree with it. So thank you for holding this. Thank you for hearing the community out, letting us all speak and speak our share as well. Thank you to the many leaders of our communities who have spoken on this resolution already and worked so hard towards bringing us forth to this conversation. Please vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Bruce Pratt, Ezra Lipp. Bruce Pratt, then Ezra Lipp, then Michael Dean. Is Bruce here?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay. Ezra? Michael Dean? Following Mr. Dean is Mike Birkins.
Good evening. I'm here to oppose the resolution, although I honestly really appreciate all the effort that has gone into this over the last few months. I think the mayor put it correctly when he indicated that lots of us feel it's simply not in our purview to get involved. Or if we do get involved, why are we involved in this and not in other conflicts in which even more Muslims are being killed than are being killed in Gaza? On those, we're totally silent. I have no idea why. The total number of deaths in the entire Arab-Israeli conflict, starting from 75 years ago, is nothing compared to the six-month total of how many people die in the Syrian War, or in Sudan, or in Libya. On those, there's total silence. I've been very impressed, in sort of a negative way this evening, when I notice a lot of the people who are here protesting, protesting that they want to free Palestine. To me, that's not just Gaza, that's Israel that they're talking about. If you're going to have a resolution at all, then my suggestion is to face the lack of moral equivalency head-on. There was a ceasefire in place, a permanent ceasefire in place on October 6th, and it was violated on one side. Hamas, Hamas has multiple times, multiple times since then indicated they will do it again when they are able to, and has declined to enter into a ceasefire. If you want to pass a resolution, pass a resolution demanding that Hamas release hostages and that they lay down their arms. "Kamar Adonai, Solach et Ami," thus says the Lord, the God of Israel. Let my people go.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Hafim Bissarat. From the lobby can come in Bruce Pratt and Ezra Lipp. Our next speaker is Hafim Bissarat. Barbara Ram. Steve Lenis.
Louis.
Steve Lewis. And if you'll line up in the aisle and let me know your name, that way folks in the lobby can come in. Lena Abu Samat. Don Gilbert. Dweev Hafim, Barbara, Steve, Lena. Please.
My name is Haitham Bissarat. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again on this critical topic. Though I'm encouraged by the fact that a draft ceasefire resolution has been added to tonight's agenda, I find much of the language in it to be highly problematic. I realize that our efforts inevitably might require compromise, and perhaps this is the best that can be achieved at the moment, but the resolutions I've read from other American cities, 74 in total, have been superior to this one. And we're the capital city of the most progressive state in the Union. For instance, the biggest, single biggest problem here is the focus on a two-state solution and the notion that ethnic states are the only way to achieve peace and security. This is utterly embarrassing. Additionally, there's not a single word that even mentions the weaponization of starvation, a war crime under international law. And along with the predictable omission of facts pertaining to the legality of occupation and blockade, there are also numerous sloppy factual errors. And lastly, much of the language seems to have an odd focus on things that are taking place here in the States when the mass slaughter and plausible genocide is taking place 8,000 miles from here. At least 30,000 human beings killed, at least 70,000 injured, millions homeless, lives shattered, children traumatized, many of them orphaned, more homes destroyed, more mosques, more churches, shops, roads, schools. All of the hospitals in Gaza have been bombed. Every university in Gaza has been leveled. 70% of the homes in that tiny piece of land have been destroyed. Call this what it is: It's genocide. What legacy? What legacy?
Time is up. Time is up. Thank you. For calm in the chamber so everyone can be heard, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Lewis, and with due respect to the resolution prepared by the mayor, I am here because I believe that rather than bringing our city together, it is just going to create further division. And I think some of that we are seeing as I speak. What I think is the biggest flaw in this resolution is that it doesn't specifically call for an end to Hamas's control of Gaza. Does it call?
It does.
Does it? No, it doesn't. What it does is it calls for a quote-unquote "change in leadership." It does not call... That could be different leaders within Hamas, just like it could be different leaders within the Israeli government. What do we know about Hamas? We know not only that it's been an international terror organization declared by every president since Bill Clinton. We know that the most recent examples are not just October 7th, but they're going on the air in a public interview, promising the world that they will repeat October 7th again and again. What will that mean if Hamas stays in power? What does it mean when Hamas is held not responsible at all for the tragedy unfolding in Gaza, even though we know that they use human shields and use civilian infrastructure such as hospitals, schools, mosques, in order to stage grounds for their attacks? What it means is a prescription for more terror, more war, and more strife here at home. Respectfully, I believe that this resolution misses the mark, and it has to place responsibility where responsibility belongs, on the terror organization of Hamas. And to call for unrestricted aid means letting in weapons. We all know that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Barbara Ram.
Do not remind repeating it calmly. I know emotions are high. And again, people agree, disagree with the resolution, excuse me, agree, disagree with the speakers. That is all expected, and that's okay. But we can't have people shouting out. Otherwise, everyone, no one else can be heard. So I'm just going to keep repeating it and hope that we continue what we're doing, because I think we're doing pretty well, actually. Mr. Gilbert?
Miss, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Don Gilbert. I have a business in the city of Sacramento. I do oppose the resolution, but before I get into a brief description of why, I just want to acknowledge, you know, that especially the witnesses from the Muslim community who support on your behalf, Mr. Mayor, who supported, who support the resolution, we might disagree. We might not see eye to eye. I think we don't, but I want to acknowledge your anguish and your real sorrow. I know it's real, and I'm sorry that you're having to deal with it. I guess in a nutshell, people of goodwill, like the folks over here and in my community, the Jewish community, we can get together, we can extend a hand to one another without it being politicized like it is clearly here today. And I would, I have no doubt that we could, that we could try to bridge differences. But the fact is that there, the truth is in the eye of the beholders, and there are many, many provisions in this well-intended resolution that the Jewish community, the organized Jewish community, and myself, we think are wrong, and we think they feed a blood libel. And there's no reason for the city of Sacramento to say, okay, this is imperfect, but we're going to adopt it because somehow it'll help bring people together. You're actually memorializing certain things as fact that a lot of people in this community don't believe are facts. And so for that reason alone, I think it would be a very, a very inappropriate action to adopt this resolution because it's not just imperfect. We don't all agree, and you're taking a position. Rather, I think those of us who want to see a better world for both communities on our own can get together, extend a hand to one another, and try to bridge differences.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Barbara Ram. Lena Abu Samat.
Hi, City Council and Mayor. So I wasn't gonna, I don't have anything prepared. I was thinking I was opposed to the resolution because, well, I don't understand how you have to release all of the Israeli prisoners, but you only have to release the Palestinian prisoners who aren't charged. And that didn't really seem fair to me. And how you get rid of those who are in power, just, I don't know, it didn't seem fair. So I guess I'm gonna, really torn, because I think it's a start, but I think what the person said before us was... I can't get my thoughts clear, but those were the, that was the one that stood out to me, like, why release Israelis' blanket and not release Palestinians' blanket? Like, just do that! Just do that! Anyway, that's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Men?
Hi. My name is Lena Abu Samaha. I'm here on behalf of my family, refugees from Palestine, who know all too well the agony of displacement and scars of generational trauma caused by this occupation lasting over 75 years, decades before October 7th. Forced by similar violences to leave our ancestral home, settlers seized our land and made it impossible for us to ever be able to return. This injustice, this violence echoes through not just ours, but so many families' history. But it's not just about the past, it's about the present and the future. As we gather here today, the horrors continue unabated. The violence in Palestine sees over 35,000 massacred, with 14,000 innocent children perished, and over 70,000 civilians injured in the last six months alone, not to mention the catastrophic famine causing many, especially children, to die slow deaths confirmed by the directors at UNICEF. Let us not forget about the war crimes being committed with impunity, bombing all hospitals, leaving thousands of children limbless, and erasing cultures. Today, we can make a stand and be counted among the few who dare to speak truth to the power. The resolution before us calls for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and calls on the Biden administration to use U.S. tax dollars to truly aid the innocent suffering rather than further funding the ongoing destruction. While not perfect, and we must fix inaccuracies, a small, yet critical step towards ending the cycle of oppression and bringing hope and freedom to people, my people, who have suffered for far too long. Let us not be swayed by ignorance or indifference. Instead, let us be guided by our conscience, the principles of justice and compassion that unite us as human beings. Together, we can make Sacramento, the capital city, a beam of hope and shining example of solidarity and empathy. Today, right now, I implore you, we must show the world that in the face of injustice, we will not remain silent.
Thank you for your comments. Bruce, then Ezra, then Ryan Misano.
My name is Ezra Lipp. I live in District 6. I grew up in New England. I attended a Jewish day school, and in eighth grade, we had Holocaust Studies class. And I remember a point of discussion was we were talking about the other people in Europe and in Germany, and we were asking, how could they, how could they let this happen? How could they stand by idly while these people went to gas chambers, while all these atrocities happened? And I remember making a vow as a 13-year-old that in my lifetime, I would not let genocide happen on my watch. I've, thank you. I failed terribly. There's so many awful things that have happened since then, and I have not been a good activist. But when it comes to being here tonight, when it comes to people that represent Israel, which is tied to my cultural Jewish identity, I can't be silent when I see what's happening. When I see, yeah, just the millions of people starving, limbless, without anesthesia, these heartbreaking things that we're seeing every night, I do not believe that this is going to result in peace. I believe the Jewish Federation has said that they think these are justified to defense. And my question is, what would be a justifiable defense to these war crimes and horrors? What, what, thank you. What proportionality would be the appropriate response using that logic? I know this is a very sensitive issue. I know everyone is suffering, and everyone wants to seek understanding and peace, but this is how I feel, so thank you for listening to me.
Ryan Misano, Sarah Alzanan, Pam Herman, Jolene Herman, Sandy Fawn. Mr. Misano? Your name?
Firdos Sheikh.
Did you, did you sign up, Ms. Sheikh?
Yes, I did send it in.
Okay, then go ahead. We'll, we'll make sure that we find your...
Where is Sarah?
Well, okay, we'll wait then. Hold on. We're gonna, everybody gets a chance to speak. Why don't we wait until we call your name, Ms. Sheikh, okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan Misano. Sarah Alzanan.
I strongly support the ceasefire resolution, though I agree with other speakers, the wording needs considerable revision. However, we would never have been in this situation had Israel not come into existence through deceit and lies. A lot of the division comes from the media. It isn't hard to see who controls the media.
This guy is a Nazi. We don't support him. He's a Nazi! They don't have to speak!
I, I, I am making a silent protest. I urge you to do the same thing so that we can make sure everyone is heard. Please, please.
Your resolution says you are for the dignity of all... Your resolution says you are for the dignity of all residents of Sacramento. I am afraid, as Emerson said, your actions speak so loudly, I cannot hear what you are saying. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. You support Israel, whose first Prime Minister, David Ben-Gurion, ordered the bombing of the King David Hotel, killing and wounding over 100 innocents. You use the usual terms we hear from leftist, cultural Marxist, antisemitism, racism. Let's be clear, there should be no harm done to any innocent person of any race or religion. I personally denounce harm or violence done to any innocent Jew, but I also denounce Jews being able to escape criticism for their harming goyim or non-Jews. Getting tired of being called an anti-Semi for simply stating truths about Jewish wrongdoing. And why is anyone supporting Israel, the most racist nation on earth? There are no blacks, Latinos, or Asians in Israel, and there are no plans to change this. Israel is, America has given the most foreign aid to Israel since 1948, and Israel won't allow you to move there unless you are a Jew. That's xenophobic. So many Jews want open borders for America, but they want closed borders for Israel. Why the hypocrisy? And why don't you condemn loxism and Antarianism, which is the hatred of Europeans' whites, which this council, the media, schools, and politicians engage in often?
Sarah Alzynon, then Pam, then Jolene.
My council members, my name is Sarah Alzynun, and I'm a Palestinian-American. My grandfather is from Gaza, and my grandma lived in our sister city, Ascalon, in 1948. Her village was destroyed, she was ethnically cleansed, and its inhabitants were forcefully displaced. So what came first, October 7th or April of 1948? Her childhood home still stands to this day. A European family lives there right now. My relatives were being killed 40 years before the creation of Hamas. As I've stated several times before, by October 26th, I lost 56 relatives over the span of 60 days, including an 11th-month-old baby, Yassin Alzynun, same last name as me. And by "lost," I mean they were murdered, maimed, and killed by Israeli airstrikes. I'm watching my surviving family members starve to death, and they will starve at this rate. After six months, I am grateful that a resolution is on the agenda, but I believe the resolution should be tabled until my vang returns. The language in the resolution seems to equate violence, you can't equate violence of the oppressor with the violence of the oppressed. They're not the same, and the oppressor is the ultimate source of the violence of, from both sides. Please support a ceasefire, and please consider amendments. Never again means never again for anyone. Palestinians deserve to live with freedom and safety, which means first stopping this genocide and then ensuring liberation from occupation and apartheid. The liberation and safety of Palestinians, Israelis, Jewish people, Muslim people, are intertwined. There can only be true safety when we are all free from oppression. Please support a ceasefire, and please consider the amendments that were brought forth to you.
Excuse me, I'm gonna remind you again, there will be a vote tonight. And so, the question is whether or not everyone here gets the opportunity to be heard. Thank you. Please.
Mayor, council members. I'm Pam Herman, the interim CEO of the Jewish Federation of the Sacramento Region. The Federation is opposed to this resolution. We oppose it because the city council should not be weighing in on foreign policy issues, of which they have no jurisdiction or expertise. We know that this, this resolution written in Sacramento will not change the course of the war between Israel and Hamas. It is our opinion that it can cause further divide in our community. This resolution is a compromise, and as such, contains misstatements and omissions that make false equivalencies between an attack by a genocidal terrorist group, Hamas, and Israel's justified defense response. The resolution also equates hostages, those stolen from their homes, those stolen from a peace concert, held in inhumane conditions, suffering from abuses and rape, with prisoners in Israeli jails. They are not equivalent. The resolution also lists the number of deaths and injuries based solely on unverified information provided by Hamas, a terrorist organization, and does not distinguish between noncombatants, Hamas terrorists killed while shooting at Israeli soldiers, and civilians killed by Hamas. It leaves the impression that everyone who's died in Gaza is a civilian killed by Israel, which is also false. We mourn, we mourn the loss of all life, and I'm in tears after our last speaker, and I am, I'm truly mourning the loss of all lives. And we are all in favor of lasting peace between the Palestinians and Israelis. This resolution, if passed, may continue to, continue to create unsafe spaces for our Jewish community and do nothing to create the lasting peace we all desire. For the safety of our community, and for the repair within our own community, we urge you to vote no. Regardless of the vote, I hope that it brings peace to our--
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Jocelyn, then Sandy.
Everybody speaks, please.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Herman. I ask you to oppose this resolution. I also believe it is beyond your purview. And most importantly, I don't think it will help Sacramentoans, Israelis, or Palestinians. I ask you to oppose this resolution, not because I oppose calls for peace, or because I oppose efforts for our communities to begin to heal together, but because I don't believe this will help either. Members of the impacted communities that were noticeably ignored by most of the comments introducing this resolution is the Israeli community here in Sacramento, whose friends and family are still being held hostage, still under bombardment, and still under existential threat from Hamas, who has promised to repeat the atrocities of October 7th again and again, until there are no Jews left in the world. A resolution on the Israel, a resolution on the Israel-Hamas war will not help rebuild relationships in our inner faith community. I believe, unfortunately, it will cement positions and make it only harder to heal. We are all still grieving. I do thank you, Mayor, for your efforts to begin to heal our communities, and the leadership in our Jewish and Israeli and Palestinian and Arab communities, who are trying to begin to heal together through dialogue. However, I don't believe this resolution will help, as it will cement our positions. I disagree with the mayor's characterization of this resolution. The specific words matter, there is good in it, but it still lends itself to a narrative that is not true, a narrative that diminishes the atrocities and sexual violence committed on October 7th and still being committed today. An attempt to bring a compromise, the language compromises on the truth. A resolution will not calm tensions here, as evident by many of the resolutions in the Bay Area, and the continued rise of antisemitism in those communities. I do not believe this resolution will calm tensions in this meeting, or lower the tensions in Sacramento. I don't believe it will help us heal, although I do hope that we are able to learn to do so together. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sandy, then Eileen Jacobowitz, then Bario Hay.
I'm sorry, is this, who is--
And, should be Sandy, then Eileen Jacobowitz, then Bara Hay Davidoff.
Eileen Jacobowitz already, already spoke.
Hi, I'm Sandy Fawn. I think we can all agree that this issue has gotten out of control. The lack of civility, respect, and really bad behavior that we've seen in this room are a testimony to that. It's clearly a highly-charged emotional issue.
Excuse me, excuse me, Sandy, your time, we'll pause your time. Whoever is shouting out, you are preventing people who agree with you from being heard. So, one more time, like that, I'm going to have to call a recess, and I don't want to do it. Because I actually think this is going pretty well tonight. If we can just keep allowing people to be heard, we will, we will get through this, and everyone will be heard. Please, no more.
Thank you, Mayor. This is clearly a highly-charged emotional issue, and resolutions should not be presented or passed based on emotion. Resolutions should pass based on clear and critical thinking, on reason, and on facts. But the main reason this resolution should not pass, should not even be on the agenda, is because it is not the business of Sacramento City Council to pass resolutions about Israel, or any other country or city for that matter. Just as it would be inappropriate for the city of Tel Aviv to pass a resolution regarding any of Sacramento's problems, such as our homelessness, this resolution is absolutely inappropriate. That should be the end of the story. But even in the hypothetical situation that a ceasefire in Israel is our business, as I said earlier, resolutions need to be based on facts, not misinformation and disinformation, not general language that promotes misunderstanding, and not on omissions, including the fact that Hamas has publicly stated it does not want a ceasefire, that they will continue to attack Israel again and again. I ask you to reject this resolution. I question the mayor's suggestion that this resolution will resolve anything. It will not. Let the city of Sacramento return the focus to improving what we do have control over, Sacramento. Thank you for listening to me.
Davidoff, Bario Hay, then Noor Hariz, then Drew Gibson, then Kevin Bolts.
Good evening, and thank you very much. I'm Bario Hay Davidoff, a resident of Sacramento County, actually living in Carmichael, was for 35 years a manager at state government, and proud to serve this community. I implore to reject this resolution. I do have a tribe, family in Israel, some of them in France, some of them outside, all impacted. I realize the pain, suffering of both sides, but we did have a ceasefire at October 7th, and before that, too, many times was violated. I tell you, ladies and gentlemen, if you pass this resolution tonight, in two years, we will be back here to pass another resolution for ceasefire. This is not fight against Palestinians. I am proud Jew, proud Israeli, and proud American, and for peace, for two-state solution, I fight for that. However, this is a fight against Hamas, has been considered, not considered, declared terrorist organization by Canada, Australia, European Union, United States, many civilized countries. And we have to finish that job, as we did it in Second World War with Nazi Germany. We cannot leave this. We are not. My, my family members are there. Yesterday, I was talking with some of them that are in military. I said, "Do you think that there will be ceasefire?" He said, "Bario Hay," I'm his uncle, "there will be ceasefire in 10 minutes if Hamas puts his arms and hands the power to Palestinian authorities."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
That's it. Thank you.
Noor.
And Noor is the next speaker.
Noor Hariz, then Drew Gibson, then Kevin Bolts.
Okay. That's you, Noor.
So, hi, first of all, so, I just want to start by, before we start, there's, actually in 10 minutes, there will be a baking fast here for a lot of people that have been starving all day today. So would you guys just allow at least for some sandwiches to be here? They've been fasting since early morning.
I, I, I don't know that we're, we're, we're prepared.
Okay. Can you reset that? It was just a note from everybody because they want to just eat.
We do the best we can here.
Yeah, because they want to eat. They've been fasting all day.
Okay, Noor, Noor, please start.
Go ahead. I'll do it.
Thank you.
So, can you reset that, please? Thank you.
Reset, two, full two minutes for Noor. Yes, please.
So--
Thank you. Full two minutes.
The mayor of Sacramento has made a self-serving, unitary, actually, decision without including diverse voices from the Palestinian and the Jewish community. And instead, he relied, actually, on his conversation with certain groups of organizations here that does not represent the whole community. The language, actually, and the dehumanization contained in this resolution makes us really think where the mayor is standing, really, and who is he electing. We reject the abuse of power and the manipulation that's mentioned there. It is clear that the community at large, that the community at large want a resolution that will serve and bring justice to over 30,000 people that, who have died, and also they're placing, they're displacing almost, like, 2 million people, and we refuse to sign a resolution that does not, that mentions the Holocaust. I'm looking, I'm talking to you, because honestly, you refuse to mention, you mentioned the Holocaust without mentioning, actually, the genocide in that one. There is a genocide going on right now in Gaza, and you refuse to mention that in that resolution, which is really annoying, to be honest with you. And also, where there's one more thing, too. You, actually, we refuse to sign a resolution that also, actually, mentioned, that does not mention the displacing of almost 2 million people. And we refuse, actually, Hamas is not, Hamas has never been the reason behind this conflict. Hamas is the outcome of this conflict. That's what Hamas is. The numbers, the numbers have been killed in Gaza, have risen, actually, and you know that, and everybody knows that, to almost over 30,000 people. There is actually, also, there's no mentioning of all the schools being destroyed, all the churches being destroyed, all the mosques being destroyed. This resolution has to be easy and simple. Resolution, actually, just sending AIDS, release, civilians, release, actually, the hostages, really, that's the only three lines, sending AIDS. We don't have to go through all this, because it does not serve right now what we are standing for. You know that we love our Jewish brothers and sisters. We stand by them. We stand by--
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker, Drew Gibson. Your time is complete.
Noor, one last thing.
Or our Jewish brothers and sisters, is attack on all of us. You know that, we say--
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
There's a lot of sorely uninformed people here tonight, but this is gonna focus on you, Darrell. Morally vacant press conferences with the cherry-picked audience and feeble, respect-chasing quips on how you dream of being called mayor-emeritus won't save the bankruptcy of your politics, won't obscure the way you place your desperate need for quaint respectability and positive media perception above a brutal genocide against the families of your constituents. Sacramento, the capital of the fourth-largest economy in the world, stands for what exactly if it does not accept openly committed genocide within its purview? Who are you and your colleagues to stand in the global arena of influence and economy and shirk responsibility? Do we not all understand the word leader to imply leading? Darrell, for months, you have barred Palestinians in the community, the ones without money, influence, or your desired temperament, in the face of the systemic murder of their people, and having a say in this issue. Now you rush through a resolution that sidesteps their needs. Lisa, who I thought was off somewhere sulking in her insolence but seems to have made her way back, has made unfounded accusations of antisemitism affected Palestinians and community members, while choosing to ignore the hateful rhetoric of known neo-Nazi Ryan Misano sitting in the yellow shirt, who is unfortunately here again. Darrell, you speak of commonality and suffering with zero empathy, so I ask, where do your intentions actually lie? I hope for the sake of my love for the city and its people that Palestinians in Palestine never learn of what you've brought to official review, that they, that they never have to understand how Sacramento leadership has failed them. You condemn anti-democratic behavior then force a vote with a quarter of the council representation not present. Can I ask which dictionary you use? If you wanted a fair vote, you would wait for my vang to return, you would wait for the entire constituency of District 2 to have representation. If you cared for democracy, you would table this vote, but clearly, doing the democratic thing is difficult for you, considering how you just tried to start this meeting while everyone is still waiting outside. The echo chamber in which you wander will do you no favors. The choices you made--
Time is complete. Our next speaker is Kevin Bolts. Mr. Bolts.
I want to start off by saying, if someone's liberation bothers you, then you likely benefit from their oppression. Also, there are no two sides to this conflict. There is one side experiencing genocide and a side who shouldn't be here. By definition, a human shield deters attacks from an enemy combatant, and since Israel targets every single civilian in Gaza, there are no human shields in Gaza. Israel is currently occupying Palestine, Syria, and internationally-recognized Lebanon. According to the Geneva Convention and multiple international charters, they have no right to self-defense or safety. According to a 2004 opinion by The Hague and the ICJ, Israel cannot invoke the right to self-defense when responding to attacks from occupied territory. We're talking about an entity whose official policy--
We're talking about an entity whose official policy is to kill its own civilians under the Hannibal doctrine lest they be traded for Palestinian hostages. This excuse of a resolution reflects none of these international laws, none of the firsthand accounts from NGOs, and none of the rulings. It comes completely from a place of 40 beheaded babies, terrorists named after days of the week, and tunnels under hospitals, none of which were true. It demonizes a defense group called Hamas, who was not a terrorist organization according to the United Nations, and who never killed an Israeli civilian before someone walked into a mosque in 1994 and committed the Ibrahimiy massacre, starting the cycle of violence between Hamas and Israel. He was an Israel settler from New York, dressed as an IDF soldier, by the way. No one behind me who's brought up hostages cares about the 9,100 of Palestinians in prison, cares about the 3,600 in detention without charges. They only care about the people who were kidnapped on October 7th, the people killed by Israeli tanks, the people killed by Israeli helicopters. The actual death toll of Israelis has not been adjusted to reflect friendly fire in this. You need to table it till my...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jalen. Palestine Ahmad, Alexander B., then Savannah. Jalen?
Look, I don't usually come up here because I don't like being redundant, but I just wanted to reiterate some things that some of my colleagues have said, and it's just, I find it kind of odd that you, that you know, this decision has been made to bring such an important resolution without any discussion of amendments, like that just went out the door, and that's really disrespectful in that you claim to have representation from both sides, the Palestinians. I'm a Palestinian, I mean, I understand some of my colleagues in the community have come together and negotiated, but again, that doesn't represent everyone, and if there is a draft, that draft should be able to be on the table for a discussion about amendments. It doesn't look like that's possible because there are two council members that are out. So I think like, it's fair to table such a thing for a time where there's full council representation. Thank you.
Then Alexander B., then Savannah. Falston, Alexander B., Savannah.
Is Falston here?
Falston.
That was the gentleman there. He just spoke. Okay, hold on, hold on. Who's next, please? Who's next, please?
So I have Jalen, Jalen. Did Jalen speak?
Jalen.
Jalen. Falston, then Alexander B., then Savannah. Falston, thank you.
Yeah, Palestine just went.
Thank you.
Falston spoke already.
I'm Jalen, okay. As of now, more than 30,000 people have been murdered by Israel since October. 1 million faced famine of the worst kind, children are literally starving to death, and we are facing perhaps the greatest humanitarian catastrophe of our time. It takes an astounding level of cognitive dissonance to be more concerned about public disruptions than you are about our government funding an ongoing genocide. The fact is, the mayor is right in one regard. No city's resolution will solve the crisis in Gaza, but in the same way that we are all collectively responsible for the crimes against humanity currently going on in Gaza, we all have a role to play in stopping this atrocity from continuing, and we all have a responsibility to change the narrative to ensure that such inhuman deeds fueled by systemic dehumanization will never again pollute our world. A ceasefire resolution condemning October 7th as a quote-unquote terrorist massacre but condemns or continues to frame Israel's calculated slaughter of tens of thousands of civilians as an unfortunate but still potentially legitimate military operation is not a resolution of justice. A resolution that demands the existence of an apartheid state is not a resolution of justice. A resolution that weaponizes the true and real evil of the Holocaust in order to justify the further oppression of the Palestinian people is not a resolution of justice. You cannot, you cannot continue to further accept and rationalize, continue with the rationalization of this injustice. And in fact, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you all, we need to table this right now. It's crazy that two council members are not here to potentially have an amendment for this resolution. I do not think that is a coincidence whatsoever. I do think it comes down to the fact that I don't believe you all just suddenly had a heart. I think you all see that the tide is shifting and that soon there will be a free Palestine from the river.
Thank you for your comments.
I'd like to start off by reminding everybody of the UNGA Resolution 37-43, which reaffirmed the inalienable right of the Palestinian people and all peoples under foreign and colonial domination to self-determination. It also reaffirmed the legitimacy of the struggle of peoples for the liberation from colonial and foreign domination and foreign occupation by all available means, including armed struggle. Anyway, this is quite the circus that you put on here, and I guess that is your specialty considering what a bunch of clowns you all are. If you really wanted to hear from the community, maybe you should table it for when the whole council is actually here, so you can actually consider possible amendments rather than just pretend to. Maybe then you'd also have the time to involve the wider community instead of just the wealthy and powerful who will say yes to anything for a photo op, because this, that is all this is. That is all this is. It is a photo op, an empty superficial distraction to ignore how heartless this city council truly is. If you really want to convince the public otherwise, then you should at the very least table this awful Zionist racist deceitful resolution till next city council, so that it may be amended, because as it stands, it is an insult to every single Palestinian who's been killed, every, probably 50,000 at this point, every Palestinian who's been killed, displaced, and injured. Honor to all the martyrs, men, women, children, freedom fighters, journalists, poets. Long live the Intifada. Free Palestine.
And I'm giving as much room as I can. Continue to shout, and we will recess, and we will have to clear the chambers. Please do not. Go ahead. Please, you're up next. You're up next.
My name is Savannah Sanchez, and I served four years active duty in the United States Marine Corps. Lisa, you are my council member. Darryl, I have watched you utterly disrespect the Palestinian community, and you, Lisa, utterly disrespect the Palestinian community time and time and time again, and now for PR stunts? You want to act like you have the Palestinian community on one side and the Jewish community on the other. Oh yeah, you're shaking your head like, yes, you do. He does. He does, and that's a fucking problem, because this resolution is trash. It is horrible. It needs to be tabled. It is unjust. It should not be accepted. It is dehumanizing, and it is racist, and it's Zionist propaganda, and you come over here, you act like you're doing them a favor, when you back them in a corner and you tell them this is all you fucking get? This is a ceasefire resolution you get? You have no choice but to take this crap? It's disrespectful. It's so obvious what you're doing here. You have all these cameras for a purpose, to make yourself look good, and it's so obvious. Table this resolution, wait till May Deng, who proposed a good resolu-- not even a good resolution, an acceptable resolution, with the Palestinian community who backed it, with Katie who backed it. Table this one now, accept the amendments, and vote on it when May is here.
Here is Mara Sina Badia, then Rachel Wilkinson, then Dylan Lee. Mara Sina. Mara Sina Badia, Rachel Wilkinson, Dylan Lee, Kenan Musa. Mara Sina Badia, Rachel Wilkinson, Dylan Lee, Kenan Musa.
Is that, okay. All right. Permanent ceasefire is not an act of heroism or humane on behalf of this hypocritical political body in this room. It's the absolute bare minimum, and it is outright shame, a shame that it has taken this room almost six months and more than 40,000 people brutally murdered and thousands others kidnapped and tortured. The Palestinian people have been victimized, victims of colonization and occupation for a century, and this victim blaming must end. Amendments to the current resolution must be made, or an entirely new one brought forth. The resolution, as it may address one immediate and imperative need to stop the merciless murdering and starvation of the Palestinian people, does not address the root cause of the problem. The resolution diminishes and ignores the struggles the native Jewish, Christian, and Muslim Palestinians have had to endure for decades. The resolution must be amended to show the responsibility of the ongoing brutal occupation leading up to the events of October 7th. I support a permanent ceasefire, and I support the unconditional aid to the Palestinian people, while I also demand the complete retreat of the occupation and laying down of the arms. I demand the occupation ends and for it to have no controlling involvement whatsoever in the affairs of what shall be a free Palestine. I demand the end of the settlements and return of homes and lands of the Palestinian people. I demand the occupation and its accomplices be held responsible, including all of you that are opposed to a ceasefire or any respectable resolution. I demand the occupation accomplices be held responsible for the atrocities and loss they have caused. I demand that restitution be given to all Palestinians that have been displaced from their lands and homes. I demand restitution for all Palestinians that have lost their families, a part of their bodies, their dignity, and the right of trauma-free future. I demand restitution for rebuilding all that has been taken and destroyed by the occupation since the beginning of the occupation. I demand a free Palestine, and I demand the Sacramento call for a just, not a victim blaming, resolution. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Steinberg, do you remember me? First, I'd like to apologize to Rick Jennings for cursing about the Raiders. As a Muslim, that's unacceptable. I was just kind of having fun with you as an African-American. I'm a quarter-black, so that was unacceptable. However, I was angry because, Mayor Steinberg, no offense, you are a hypocrite. I watch you treat people like shit all the time. Sorry for my language, it's Ramadan. But then when it comes to having a media, like, opportunity, you're all, you know, happy and stuff. You were so happy to sit and with the black community for Black History Month, but where were you listening when they came in here for the court act? You weren't. You were ignoring us. Just right now, you turned away when Ryan was speaking, but last time, you were nodding your head in agreement when he was quoting the Talmud about killing the dirty Jews. You were. You were. It's on film, on my phone. To address the people talking about hostages, because I'm done talking to you, Mayor Steinberg, I'm sorry, and Kaplan, I'm glad your hair is no longer green. If you need a cosmetologist, I have a license. The hostages, the hostages that Hamas has had, there's literally videos of them like laughing with Hamas, videos of them flirting with Hamas. They come back and tell people that the real threat to them was Israel. Israel is bombing their own people. It's documented. Israel breaks their own laws all the time. Everyone who's supporting Israel or trying to stay neutral is literally just uneducated because what is happening is genocide. It has been genocide since October 6th. It's disgusting that we've had to sit here and beg for six months now. It's almost six months. We're starving to death. Our people are starving to death. This resolution's not going to do anything. I fully agree, like, agree with some people. The ceasefire's not going to do anything. You should be ashamed of yourself, Mayor Steinberg. That's all I have to say.
I come forth as a descendant of Armenian genocide survivors. Some of my ancestors actually sought refuge in Jerusalem and were welcomed with open arms when they were not demanding that they have their own state and claim to the land and didn't try to take over all the land, and that is exactly what brings me here today. Mayor, you and your others in this room claim that Sacramento has no purview over conflicts thousands of miles away. This statement reflects a deeper lack of understanding of how world systems work and is an insight into your own ignorance. This city has annual state and federal platform for advocacy, which you can use, and it shows that we do have purview over this issue. Sacramento, the capital of one of the biggest, largest economies in the world, absolutely has purview over this issue. Council, I am in support of this resolution only and only if it is tabled until all of the council members are here and proper edits are made. The root cause of this issue is the settler colonial state, and that is Israel. That is at the core of this issue. That is what you claim to be trying to address with this resolution, but there is no, the language does not reflect that in this resolution. There is no such thing as peace on stolen land. The specific statements that I believe need to be reviewed or modified are starting with number three, since it is factually incorrect and intentionally misleading, as less than 150 hostages remain in Gaza, not hundreds as the resolution claims. Number five must be amended as it suggests that the indigenous peoples of Palestine do not deserve to live or have access to the lands that the settler colonial state has stolen from them, while simultaneously legitimizing the settler colonial entity of Israel by claiming that a two-state solution is needed. Number six needs to be removed as it is inaccurate and misleading, less than 900 civilians were killed on October 7th, some of whom were killed by the Israeli military.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Kenan.
Yeah. Okay, greetings, everyone. Mostly going to be echoing what was said, a lot, most of what needs to be said has been said already, but as we all know, the events that transpired on October 7th didn't happen out of a vacuum. The subjugation, occupation, oppression has been ongoing for over 75 years. Israel in the last five months has committed every war crime possible, from human trafficking to orphan organ theft of the deceased. Prior to that, they have defied every single agreement that they've made in attempts to convey peace. It was merely a facade in order to dosify the Palestinian people so that they can continue their division. Illegal settlements continued to be constructed to divide Palestinian lands, to segregate and isolate the people from one another, walls built through neighborhoods to divide individual communities. So this is nothing new, you know, and it's still taking place. It was taking place before this, before what happened on October 7th. If the Israelis stop fighting, there will be peace. If the Palestinians stop fighting, there will be no more Palestinians. The very atrocities that Israelis, the very atrocities that Israelis accuse the world of committing are the very ones they commit themselves. By stating their fears, they really only reveal their intentions. The issue with the language of the resolution is that it attempts to give merit to the claim of an oppressor while negating the plight of the people who are on the receiving side of that oppression. I ask that the ceasefire be written in a way that conveys both solidarity with the Palestinian people, but not enable or moralize apartheid regime by somehow claiming that liberation and apartheid are the same thing. Thank you.
Then? David Mandell, Henry Harry Wang, Salem Amar, Zico Gonzalez. David Mandell? Okay. Okay, so I'll call a few more. David Mandell, Harry Wang, Salem Amar, Zico Gonzalez, Grant Raben, Ryan B.
Not at all. My name is David Mandell, District 4. I have been a longtime Sacramentoan and long active with a group called Jewish Voice for Peace, which has been prominently leading, together with our Palestinian and many other partners, the struggle for a ceasefire since October, and long before that, struggling for Palestinian human rights. Seventy-some other cities have passed ceasefire resolutions, including nearby ones in California, Richmond, San Francisco, Oakland, and, who, I lost my other glasses, never mind, I can read it, and the city of Davis. None of them were perfect, none of them were ideal, but all of them were resolutions that I could gladly support because they called for three important elements and didn't mess it up with extraneous propaganda. They called for immediate ceasefire, immediate permanent ceasefire, oh, thank you, for, to enable, which is the only thing that would enable the massive amounts of humanitarian aid that are needed to bring about, to save off the disaster, and for the release of hostages. aid that are needed to bring about, to save off the disaster, and for the release of hostages. The resolution being considered now contains those things, and it also contains one other really important thing, recognitions of something that most of people in this room who are not Palestinian probably weren't even aware of, the thousands of Palestinians who are held sometimes for years without charge or without being put on trial. That's a start toward releasing many more thousands of Palestinian prisoners. The Palestinians and Muslims who are arguing in favor and against this resolution are united in criticizing it for perpetuating a false idea of antisemitism that says that criticizing Israel is considered antisemitism.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Henry, Harry Wang. Following Harry is Salem.
My name is Harry Wang. I'm president of the Sacramento Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. Mayor Steinberg and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Our membership, along with an additional 100 area healthcare professionals, support an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, although we have quite a bit of difficulty with the language of the resolution that does not speak to the catastrophic impact of the Napka or about the impact of the brutal occupation. But having said that, we do support the resolution. But more importantly than representing my organization, I come here as a human being and as a taxpayer. A human being that wants to value every life in our country and around the world, and a taxpayer that doesn't want to provide the arms being used to kill all the people, 30,000 people in Gaza, or $14 billion that's being requested to fund the war. A few weeks ago, I met and heard Stockton oncologist Dr. Youssef Kalfa give several talks in the area. He was interviewed by Vicky Gonzalez on the March 11 Insight Program. I encourage you to listen to that program. And there were several things that stood out that I'd like to report back. First, he was astonished to see hundreds, hundreds of aid trucks at the Rafa-Egypt border. They were just stuck. Nothing was getting in. Second, there were tens of thousands of civilians seeking shelter in and around European Hospital in Khan Yunis. And third, even though over 340 healthcare workers have been killed, he worked with a team he brought from the United States despite all the bombing that was going on in and around the hospital. Please, support the ceasefire.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Salem, then Hiko.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Chico Gonzalez, and I'm a Chicano artist, educator, and poet, and also an organizer. Over the past five months, I've been creating artwork and organizing Chicano solidarity events in support of Palestinians in Gaza and the Palestinian diaspora. Our solidarity efforts have been to denounce the death and destruction that Israel is inflicting upon the Palestinian population in Gaza. My community has a long history of supporting the Palestinian struggle for liberation and self-determination. Many in my community feel that the current resolution lacks the proper language that affirms the dignity and the humanity of the Palestinian people, especially those whose blood was spilled in Palestinian land by Israel and their occupying forces. The current resolution reads more like a rough draft than a final resolution ready for voting. Language, language is important. I know that first hand because English is my second language. I urge this council to please listen to the concerns of our Palestinian Muslim and Arab brothers and sisters that want their dignity and their humanity reflected in the resolution that Mayor Steinberg has put forth. I want to talk to my homie Eric Guerra, Katie Valenzuela, and Karina Talamantes, as members of the Chicano community that were made foreigners in their own land back in 1848, a year, a year before the US stole by force this land that we know as California. That is exactly what is happening to Palestinians in Gaza since 1948. So we want to call upon you, our brothers and sisters in this council, to stand with our brothers and sisters from Palestina. Vive Palestina Libre, Gonzafos!
Salem, Grant, and then Ryan B.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, I urge you to not pass this resolution. As admitted by its own preamble, it will have no impact on any events happening in Israel or the Gaza Strip. So what is the point of passing a resolution thousands of miles away? The mayor has answered this question. The unruly radical protesters who have been annoying him and the City Council since Hamas killed over 1,000 innocent people in cold blood. To stop their protests, just pass the resolution to appease them. This is a terrible reason to pass a resolution. As an extreme example, would the City Council pass a resolution calling for the segregation of minorities if the Ku Klux Klan began disrupting these meetings? Of course it would not. The other big reason that Mayor Steinberg points out to is that it will bring together the Sacramento community. We all know that this is an equally bad reason for passing it. Almost no one from the Jewish community supports this resolution. Sure, you can always find extremists, but of the hundreds of Jews and Israelis that I am friends with in Sacramento, I don't know a single one who supports this resolution. So why is the resolution so opposed by the Jewish community and so much in favor by those claiming to support Palestine? It's obvious, because the resolution is one-sided, makes a series of false equivalencies between Israel, a democratic multicultural nation where Jews, Arabs, Christians, and Druze live in peace, and Hamas, a masochistic, misogynistic, racist, and hate-filled terrorist organization, cites unsubstantial if not fake figures of civilian casualties, and pushes the false narrative that the issue at hand is a two-state resolution, which Hamas has disavowed. Us Jews and Israelis who have been living with the issues facing Israel know what is really going on here. Hamas, a designated terrorist organization-
You made your point. Sit down.
-that the people of Gaza have elected for 15 years.
You made your point. Sit down, sit down, sit down. All right, stop, stop. All right? Members, members, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm going to try one more time, hold on. I'm going to try one more time to calm this down. Keep going, keep going. Next speaker, go.
Thank you, City Council, for having me here today. My name is Ryan, and I don't feel comfortable sharing my last name in this forum. I don't feel comfortable because if you look me up, there's only one of me in this world, and you will see my family's address, not even my own, and I don't want them targeted. I don't want to say what affiliations I'm involved with, because when you look me up, you could see them, and I don't want them to be targeted. But I stand here in pain. Shh. I'm a proud Jew. I believe in the existence of the State of Israel. I also believe there should be a Palestinian state. I believe that people should have a place of their own, a home. I am alarmed at the high degree of antisemitism that has arisen in this country, that has been here in this chamber today. In my 30 years of life, I've spent 27 years here in Sacramento. I remember when my synagogue used to be open without an iron rod fence protecting, providing protection. I remember a world before the firebombings, at the turn of the century, where engaging Jewishly did not require a security presence, and I can state without any hesitancy and with much sorrow that that world does not exist today. Most, if not all, Jewish spaces have had to increase their security after October 7th. I am unaware of any place that has reduced those security expenses since. That money to support security is money that could have been spent and should have been spent on programming and on community good. The cost of keeping Jews safe falls on Jews alone. And so I ask this council, as you are considering this, is Sacramento a safe place for Jews?
Thank you, Ryan.
I want that to be the case, but hearing what's happening tonight, I am alarmed at the direction we are heading, and I urge you to please vote no. Thank you.
Next, next speaker, next speaker, next, next speaker.
Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
We have given the crowd multiple warnings. If speakers cannot be heard, we will do a recess.
All right, we are going to take a 10-minute recess. And here is, hold on.
I'm a healthcare worker, and I pay taxes here, so I'm going to speak. Start the timer.
I'm sorry.
Start the timer.
That's not, ma'am, that's not the way that it works, I'm sorry.
I am a healthcare worker.
We are going to take a 10-minute recess, and here's the thing, if the audience calms and everybody, and you want to hear everybody else speaking, then you will no longer shout out. If you shout out the next time and prevent others from speaking, we will clear the chambers, because a lot of people have in fact been heard, and then we will deliberate this and we will take a vote tonight. It'll be your choice when we get back in 10 minutes. 10-minute recess. We are back from a brief recess. Next speaker, please.
I stand before you as a nurse, and a mother, and a taxpayer. I keep hearing Sacramento doesn't have anything to do with this conflict, but we, the people of Sacramento, are the ones who have to go to work every day while our US tax dollars are funding a genocide by the welfare queen that we know as Israel. The Palestinian Ministry of Health reports approximately 14,861 children have been murdered by the State of Israel since October 7th, 2023. 14,861 children. What is happening in Gaza is a man-made humanitarian crisis by the State of Israel and the Western imperialist powers that back this regime. Children are starving and dehydrated. Children are being burnt and dismembered. Children are being left orphaned with a lifetime of psychological wounds, if they even survive. I'm not here to be politically correct. Children are ours to protect. These statistics should outrage you. They outrage me as a mother of two girls. They outrage me as a healthcare worker. The proposed ceasefire resolution is an insult to these children. It minimizes Palestinian casualties while inflating those of Israel. It denies Palestinian right of return. You throw us breadcrumbs and expect us to jump for joy. The people demand this resolution be tabled until Council member Mai Vang returns. We demand a one-state solution with equal rates for all citizens, regardless of race or religion. Let Gaza live free Palestine.
Next speaker, our next speaker is Maya Steinhart. Maya Steinhart, Liv Silva, Muna Abkoudar, Amanda Diamond, Jean Demon. Maya?
Hi. Good?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Maya Steinhart, and I am an anti-Zionist Jew. I'm severely disappointed in the individuals from the Jewish community who have come up here and spread consistent hateful rhetoric about the Palestinian community in Sacramento and about anti-Zionist Jews like myself. There has been categorically no antisemitic comments, except for the one avowed Nazi, in this chamber. This resolution seriously needs to be tabled until more consideration can be given for the legitimate concerns about amendments that must be added. There is one amendment that I would like to point out that has yet to be mentioned, and that is for resolved number three, calls upon the Biden administration to promptly send and facilitate the entry of unrestricted humanitarian assistance into the Gaza Strip. I advocate that we add an amendment that also states and ends sending military aid and materials to Israel. To ask for more humanitarian aid without the cessation of funding and aiding and abetting the continued military operation, we are speaking out of two sides of our mouth. Granted, the entire resolution is speaking out of two sides of your mouth. There was an acceptable resolution presented by Katie Valenzuela and Mai Vang, and Steinberg, you actively prevented it from being put on the agenda. And now you've gotten this. This is a situation that you have created. Like others in this chamber, I ask that this resolution be tabled until Mai Vang can return and amendments can be considered. Forcing a vote tonight is actively undemocratic and goes against everything you have said you believe in.
All right, yes, Maya, love that. Let's do this. So, good evening, council members and manager. I'm here as an activist for 10 years, I've been an activist, excuse me, for 10 years, dedicated to Takun Alam. As a Mexican Jewish mother, I am deeply grateful to our Palestinian community for spearheading the efforts to secure a ceasefire resolution in Sacramento. It fills me with pride to see our city's name aligned with others who have taken a stand for peace. However, I'm troubled by the current resolution authored by the mayor and the leaders in CARE, the Jewish Federation, and JCRC. It concerns me that key members of the Palestinian community and Jewish Voice for Peace were not involved in the drafting process. We must advocate for a stronger resolution because there are significant flaws in the compromised ceasefire proposals set for a vote today. In my opinion, it would be prudent to suggest tabling the current resolution and supporting amendments to address its shortcomings. This approach could allow for a more inclusive and comprehensive resolution that adequately addresses the concerns of all parties involved. Free Palestine, no Mai, no vote.
Next speaker is Muna. Speaker is Muna, then Amanda, then Jean Demon.
I don't think Mona is here, whoever that person is.
Mona? Muna? Okay. I've seen no movement, Amanda, and then Jean.
As the capital of California, we are in a unique position to set precedence for other cities to adopt ceasefire resolutions. As such, we need to be unwavering and bold in our asks. Putting a resolution on the agenda is a start from where we've been, but plain and simple, it sucks. It sucks that the only version of a resolution that made it to the agenda for us to even be discussing tonight was the one Daryl wrote himself, one that he has already said he is unwilling to accept any amendments for and will stay here all night to pass, one he says was a supposed compromise. This considering we have an empty seat for District 2 and Mai Vang is also absent tonight. Interesting timing to try to push your own version of a ceasefire resolution through and knowing this beforehand. Refusing to accept any amendments and guaranteeing to pass this version tonight, even if it means staying here until 3:00 or 4:00 AM, does not seem democratic, Daryl. Daryl, who claimed just at the beginning of this meeting that he prioritizes the democratic process and would not tolerate disruptions. Daryl's past attempts at silencing members of the community are numerous, as many have witnessed. Tapping your tiny gavel is cute, but does nothing to silence us. We all know that in the end, the power belongs to us, the people. First and foremost, I reject Daryl's version of a ceasefire resolution. Furthermore, this resolution should be tabled until Mai Vang is present. Daryl has not rushed to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda thus far, despite many months of pleas from the community. Now he feels it necessary to push this through while through votes would, two votes would be absent. As some have already said, there are many things wrong with this resolution, and I believe it is only worth passing with amendments. I urge the council to consider tabling this resolution so that amendments can be considered and a full council can vote.
Our next speaker is Jean, then Arianna, then Neda Rahin.
So I'm gonna start, and I am gonna say that it's a trash resolution, and we should wait to have the vote until we have all of our council members present, literally the definition of democracy. Anyway, I will go on to my comment. I could comment a million things on here tonight, but there's something that I don't think will otherwise be mentioned, so I guess I'll choose to go in that direction. Beyond the claim that this is the best resolution you could come up with, the most frustrating thing I've been hearing today comes from you so-called political leaders, you small-minded old farts, suggesting that what we do here in Sacramento wouldn't actually do anything to impact the situation, the genocide in Gaza. I ask you, how many drops does it take to make an ocean or snowflakes an avalanche? To insist that educating ourselves and our community now will do nothing to stop the genocide in Gaza shows how little faith you must have for future generations to build our descendants a better world. As if this hasn't been going on for 75 years already, as if that doesn't mean when you take into account that over half of the population in Gaza is under 18 years old, that's four Gazan generational lifetimes. To be 16 years old in Gaza now is to have lived through six major massacres. Six wars old is a phrase I'll never get out of my head. As I ask you, what would Gaza look like today in 2024 if the international community stepped in after the attacks in 2022, or 2021, or 2018, or 2014, or 2012, or 2008, or the list goes on and on? You all paint the genocide as something that's happened in response to a sudden or otherwise unprovoked attack on October 7th, but what October 7th was, was a last-ditch effort by what was originally a humanitarian aid group, yes, I'm referring to Hamas, after countless other attempts to get the world to finally wake the duck up and pay attention to the ongoing violence Israel has been waging since its conception in 1948. I have more to say, but that's my time.
Next speaker is Arianna, Neda Rahin, Spina Adat. Enel Ismail, then Sunrise.
Good evening, public servants. As an indigenous person, I find it extremely hypocritical that at the beginning of every meeting, you have a land acknowledgement while the US government has a huge hand in colonizing yet another indigenous people and taking land away from more indigenous people. As I'm glad there's a resolution on the table, it is not enough. The wording is extremely inaccurate, the numbers are not in proportion to what is actually factual. As known, sorry, as known, everyone here, legal jargon is extremely important, and I know all of you know that. And there is legal jargon that has been left out of this on purpose, to fund your pockets, to fund your bank accounts, and to fund others that is supporting and paying you. We know this, we can track this. The population is not stupid, and please, Daryl, if you could please get off your phone. Thank you. There is no way that we're gonna stop, even if this resolution is passed, we're not gonna stop showing up, we're not gonna stop taking the streets, we're not gonna stop showing our voices. So please understand, this is not a resolution that'll keep us quiet. If this passes, there's no way we are stopping. This is the beginning. If this passes, I want you to know, and I also know that you told Nor that he does not speak for the public, but as for me and the people I know, he does speak for me. Do not silence our people, do not silence the people that speak for us. And as for Maya being not here, she should be here, because as has been said multiple times, that is democracy. And if you fail to not include her, that is an extreme injustice. Thank you.
Speaker is Neda. Next speaker is Neda Rahin, then Spina Adat, then Enel.
Hello, I am here as a human being, a community member, and a Sacramentoan. I've lived in Sacramento since I was five years old. I've attended university here, and I practice medicine in the Sacramento community as a physician assistant. While a ceasefire resolution is a good symbolic gesture, this resolution is highly flawed. And I'm here to ask the council to seriously consider amendments to this resolution as presented before me. This resolution weaponizes Judeophobia by using the Holocaust to justify the displacement and oppression of Palestinians today. This resolution denies the Palestinian right of return. There is no mention of genocidal intent by the Israeli government as ruled by the ICC earlier this year. Thank you.
Enel? Please proceed.
The mayor wrote an op-ed in January that he would not consider a ceasefire resolution no matter what, even though thousands of children had already been slaughtered and we had been begging him for five months. So what changed? Did the mayor grow a conscience 13,000 slaughtered children later? The people who are making noise and threatening to be kicked out showed up to every city council meeting and made the same amount of noise you're seeing now. You can ask any of the police officers here who can confirm that. He didn't grow a conscience, he doesn't care, or we would have been here months ago with My and Katie's resolution that was not filled with intentionally dangerous and racist anti-Palestinian rhetoric. Pressure and annoyance got this resolution back on the table, not the mayor's conscience. So how is the mayor able to get some of the community to support it? We are desperate, and a politician manipulating the desperation of this community and its members to accept anything the mayor wrote, just because it has one word in it. We may as well have guns to our heads like the children in Gaza do. He kept this community desperate and begging him for a resolution for months. Political strategy and maneuvering is why we're here five months into a genocide. Trying to pass this resolution without My here is also political strategy. This needs to be tabled till all the council members are here, and striking dangerous language from this resolution is publicly discussed. It is the least this community deserves and people who have been fighting in this community to end a genocide.
Enel, then Sunrise, then Michael Hutnick.
Hello, I'm an Egyptian-American, and first off, I want to preface by saying I'm really sick of all this nonsense propaganda that's obviously been put into resolution, painting this as a Muslim versus Jewish issue. I think everybody by now who has any common sense knows that this has always, always has been and always will be, an issue of settler colonialism, imperialism, occupation, apartheid versus indigenous human rights. So that's like the first thing that I notice when reading this resolution. You're obviously painting that same picture. That needs to get out. This is not an issue of Muslims versus Jews, so please take that out. Second thing, organizations or career politicians do not represent anyone. We can do a pretty good job of keeping each other safe, and I will stand very proudly next to my Jewish brothers and sisters calling for a free Palestine. The resolution, as it sounds today, is unacceptable. We already had a decent resolution before, or somebody else said acceptable. This resolution is not acceptable. It needs to go through the amendments that we asked for, and Maya needs to be here as well. No My, no vote. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sunrise. Following Sunrise is Michael Hutnick, then Paul.
Good evening, council. I reject the premise that Sacramento has no role. This city has an annual state and federal legislative platform to respond and advocate on behalf of the members of this community, and we have a history of advocating to keep our diverse communities safe, even if directly from the actions of our federal government. We became a sanctuary city and led the entire state of California, led the country in keeping refugees safe in this city of Sacramento. This resolution is flawed. I don't know that this is the resolution that will get us to where we need to get to, but we need to have a resolution, and it's embarrassing that you've brought us to this point by your actions as a council. I'll defer to my recent letter to you, naming these very actions that drive the disruption that you decried. When you don't give people an outlet to speak, when you break the Brown Act, when you hand pick and choose who gets to speak, like you did back in February, this is the outcome that we get. This is where we find ourselves. We're here tonight talking about displacement, and I'm here tonight to name our complicity, domestic and abroad, while the Nevada City Rancher Yenisinaan, original caretakers of this land, who we recognized earlier, are in the process of seeking land back. Our government and our funds advance displacement of Palestinians abroad and our neighbors right here. Stop envisioning a Sacramento that militarizes the police, that displaces, bans, and imprisons our unhoused neighbors, and instead envision one that invests in care and our people. And we can't do that without reckoning with how our federal taxes are spent. As President Biden holds other nations responsible for the actions committed with the weapons they supply, so too must our federal government act responsibly with our taxed funds, funds that could have been otherwise leveraged to resolve domestic issues like ending homelessness, creating jobs that invest in infrastructure, transportation, climate mitigation and resilience, or any of the other priorities outlined in our state and federal legislative platform, the one that you wrote. So I hold you to act on that. Thank you.
Speaker is Michael Hutnick. Our next speaker is Michael Hutnick, then Paul, then Farah Ardalana, then Hayyadea Pevandi. Then Michael, Paul, Farah, and then Hayyadea.
Good evening, council and mayor. I want to express my support for a ceasefire resolution, but not this one. This one is full of trash, as has been discussed. A good way to prune that trash out is to leave whereas numbers 1, 2, 13, and 14 in place. The rest are either, they're unnecessary in a lot of different ways, no need to waste my time going into that. And then as the resolved Point 3, that is enough to get the ceasefire resolution that we need. We're asking for a ceasefire, a ceasefire. What is all the rest of this stuff doing in there? You're trying to please everyone and achieving it not at all. So please, clean this thing up and pass it. And if one of you is willing to second the proposal for amendments, great, raise your hand. If not, wait until My is here so that we can have a fair hearing. And the other thing that's been up for discussion this evening is what communities are represented here, right? And there's not enough, there's not enough, right? I've got 158 signatures that we've collected here from people, because we sat out in front of the city hall all week, and those people were not in the meeting that drafted the resolution. With a show of hands, how many people in this room were in the meeting or were consulted about what ended up in the resolution? Show of hands. I don't see a lot of hands. There's hands, but they're not up. That's fine, I recognize their hands. And those people, I'm not saying that they did not try their best, I'm not saying that they didn't try their best, but they are not the full community. We need a full conversation here, we need the full council here to debate how this resolution should look. On behalf of Sacramento, this is Sacramento's resolution, we demand it.
Next speaker is Paul, then Farah, then Hayyadea Pevandi, then Nilofor.
So for some, history began and ended on October 7th. But for those of us with well-developed reasoning skills and an ability to comprehend the full context, we understand this started over 100 years before. Israel has been bombing Palestine for eight decades, and the general attempts by colonial powers to colonize indigenous people has been going on even longer. And we recognize that those attempts to colonize were met by violent resistance by those forced into either subjugation, assimilation, or death. We recognize that indigenous people in the Americas had a right to violently respond to those attempting to eradicate them. We recognize that indigenous people in Africa had the right to violently respond to those attempting to eradicate or enslave them. That right exists in the current colonial project of Israel. Your language is mealy-mouthed both-sides-ism, as one would expect, Daryl. Demanding decorum in the face of genocide is peak neoliberal bullshit and is disgusting, even for you. And that's what some of these resolution caveats entail. You mentioned hate speech on college campuses rising, yet the thing that I've seen that has been painted as hate speech is advocacy for Palestinian rights. Hospitals haven't been forced to cease operations, they have been targeted by the military, a war crime. Collective punishment is a war crime. You also indicate that Israel is the only place Jewish people can be safe, acknowledging the people in the rest of the world are allowed to continue hating Jewish people? How is that the ideal position to take? Kick out an indigenous population, colonize their lands, all so that an ethno-state can be established because the rest of the world shouldn't have to learn to be as accepting of Jewish people as they are of every other minority? All marginalized communities deserve safety, which cannot be achieved at the cost of insecurity for others. The UN warns that 1.1 million Palestinians are at imminent risk of death as the crushing toll of the siege reaches its lethal and final stages. Amendments are needed. No My, no vote.
Farah. Our next speaker is Farah Ardalana, Hayyadea Pevandi, Nilofor Bolourchi, then Jason Weiner.
I'm with Students for Justice in Palestine here at Sacramento State. I urge you to support a ceasefire resolution, but one with a better language. The language does not do the genocide in Gaza and the Palestinian people justice at all. I have to be respectful today, probably, because if I don't, then this gets shut down. But I'm frustrated. Language and treatment these last few months from this council has been heartbreaking. Israelis are mocking us on the news and social media because they know we have to audition to this country. Say fact after fact, and it still doesn't matter. The language in this is not sufficient. Sexual violence must explicitly be defined by Israel's sexual violence on the Palestinians because it was only Israel. Two states is still a call for our ethnic cleansing. There were many uneducated arrogant comments made today by pro-colonizers, and we had to sit there like we always do and listen to the arrogance. Do not listen to this as being a simple disagreement. The colonizer wants you to think that. My family is from the colonized 48 territories, Haifa. I do not want a two states because my grandparents' house is there. That's my house, not theirs. My family suffered the Nakba, a trauma that they've all continued to hold and pass on to the next generations, including me. A two-state is not negotiable on my land. Feel free to give them half of Sacramento and let me know what you say when the walls come up and you're being bombed and starved. We won't apologize years later like you all do for Native Americans and black folks. Language means everything. To tell us to not focus on it is to ask us to lay down and accept the crumbs. We are not crumbs, I'm not. This language prioritizes Jewish suffering and disregards Palestinian suffering.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Hayyadea. Next speaker. Next speaker is Hayyadea, then Nilofor, then Jason.
Hello.
Excuse me. We have more speakers.
Hi, I'm Nilofor Bolourchi, and I'm here with my sister Hayyadee Pevandi, and we're gonna make a joint comment together, if that's okay.
Please.
We come here today as concerned citizens, driven to take action by the horrors we have been witnessing in Gaza unfold on our phones. We've been deeply disturbed by the images coming from Gaza, the indiscriminate bombing of civilians, children starving, flower massacres, and TikTok videos of Israeli soldiers making light of their violence and of Palestinians suffering in Gaza. We agree with many others who have come here today to say table this resolution until amendments can be considered and until Representative May is here. We also want to reiterate the core issue today is that Katie and I introduced their own resolution a few weeks ago, but it was unilaterally kept off the agenda by Mayor Stanberg. That resolution was similar to other resolutions passed in California cities. I ask why wasn't this resolution allowed to be considered, and why are we considering this resolution now, which was far more divisive, as we can see? I'm also here myself as an ally of Jewish Voices for Peace, and I have a statement from David Mandel.
No, 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 you don't read anybody else's statement, just your own.
This is from me. This is from me as an ally member. It's from me as an ally member. It's okay, it's okay. The notion that Jews are only safe in the state of Israel exists if the state of Israel exists as an apartheid state with only full rights for Jews is highly problematic. Are Jewish people not safe here in Sacramento? Conflating the actions of an apartheid state with Judaism is actually one of the major causes of a rise in antisemitism. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason. Our next speaker is Jason.
Good evening. My name is Jason Weiner. I'm a resident of District Five and the current Chair of the Jewish Community Relations Council. As this resolution was being drafted, the Jewish Federation and the Jewish Community Relations Council did engage in conversations with the mayor and council members, with members of our own Jewish community, and with advocates for the Palestinian cause. Nevertheless, after reviewing the final version that is being brought by the city council, our organizations opposed its passage, and we urge the council not to take this official step. On a fundamental level, the Sacramento City Council should not be weighing in on foreign policy, foreign wars, and international relations issues. Should the proposed resolution pass...
That's it. Excuse me, Jason. Stop the clock. I'm trying very, very hard. Hey, Kevin, you're going to leave. I'm trying very hard to allow everyone to speak, but I am this close now. If you continue to shout out again to recess again in order that the chambers be cleared. So it's your choice, and it'll be on you. And by the way, about 70 people have spoken. A lot of people spoke, and I want to hear everybody. But that's it. Last time. We recess, I clear the chambers. Mr. Weiner?
Thank you. So we are deeply disturbed at how advocacy for a local ceasefire resolution has often devolved into chaos at city council meetings, including name-calling, antisemitic slurs, late-night protests at the homes of our elected Jewish officials, and the absence of respect for the democratic process. We do not believe, however, that approving this resolution will end this behavior. As you've heard tonight, it may well increase it. This resolution does acknowledge some important truths: that Hamas committed horrific atrocities against Israelis, the terrible rise in Islamophobia, antisemitism, and the acceptance of hate speech in our communities. The JCRC and Jewish Federation remain ready and willing to engage in dialogue with other local faith and community leaders, including those in the Muslim and Arab community, to build relationships, support our local residents, and strengthen our city. Israel is at war with a terrorist group, not a people. We pray for a quick and lasting peace so that Palestinians and Israelis can all live in peace and security. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Zainab. I'll read off a few names. Zainab, Dan Larkins, Mimi Kaplan, Sarah Smith-Silverman, Emma Jensen. So please line up in the middle. Zainab, Dan Larkins, Mimi Kaplan, Sarah Smith-Silverman, Emma Jensen, Sam Epler. And please let me know your name when you begin. Yeah, go ahead and get started, and then I can turn it on. That'll be upside down. Turn it around. And your name?
Dan Larkins.
Thank you. Please proceed.
This boy named Adam was shot in the head in the West Bank by an Israeli soldier with a scoped rifle at the distance between me and you. Can you imagine shooting a kid like this? You would have to dehumanize the children you're told to kill. What this genocide has taught me is that I don't believe in foreign affairs anymore. Borders are literally imagined by those in power to keep themselves in power and keep working people separated. What Tom Joad says in The Grapes of Wrath is true. A fella ain't got a soul of his own, just a little piece of a big soul, the one big soul that belongs to everybody. What a ceasefire means is stop the killing. No ceasefire means killing is needed, and it works. Bombing hospitals works, right? Taking women's underwear from the homes you invade, that works. Sniping people seeking refuge at a church, that works. Killing crowds at a concert works. Running people over with a tank works. Killing people at a ratio of 40 to one is not self-defense. How can that be called self-defense? It's not war. It's not justified. It's genocide. Starving people in a place where you haven't let them leave is not war. Can you imagine feeding your children grass? Can you imagine feeding them dirt? Animal feed? What this genocide has taught me is there is a resistance growing, one that is going to fight for racial justice, environmental justice, rights for the disabled, trans rights, and an end to white supremacy. This community is getting bigger. We're getting smarter, and it's not going anywhere. Please review the amendments. Please have the courage to stand up for just and...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Next speaker, please. And your name? And your name?
Mimi Kaplan.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I am a proud Jew here with JVP. I want to thank our Palestinian community for leading the effort to get a ceasefire resolution passed in this city. I am proud to add our city's name to the list of those who have. I want to thank Katie Valenzuela and Mai Vang for the original language they partnered with Palestinian leadership to develop and offer. The moral clarity and factual accuracy of that statement was impressive and noteworthy. The language of this resolution is inaccurate. There are over 100 not hundreds held captive. The number killed in Gaza has risen to over 30,000 since the language was written. The language of this resolution is weak and does not recognize the political realities of genocide, apartheid, and occupation that are the context of this violence. The language of this resolution is antisemitic as it furthers the conflation of Jews with the state of Israel, which is specifically harmful and dangerous to Jewish people. The process of getting this resolution agendized has been very disappointing. Mayor Steinberg delayed agendizing this resolution for months. He structured public comment to hear more from the Zionist Jewish community when the Palestinian and anti-Zionist Jewish community far outnumbered them. He also held Jewish Voice for Peace and contingents of the Palestinian community out of conversations about language of this resolution. We are deeply disappointed in his lack of leadership. Please table this resolution. If this passes unamended, may it be that all anyone will remember two days from now is a headline saying Sacramento says ceasefire now. Free Palestine, no Mai, no vote.
Next speaker. And your name?
Sarah Smith-Silverman. So I'm here as a member of the Jewish community, a member of Jewish Voice for Peace, a mother and a professor of history. I'm here to say I support a ceasefire resolution. It's far past time, five months in, that Sacramento take a stand. The ceasefire resolution is the least we can do. In fact, it could and should go farther. We need to be clearer in our condemnation of Israel's genocide and recognize that there is no equivalency between Israel, a colonizing power, and Palestinians and occupied people. If we truly want an immediate ceasefire, we should be calling on Israel to stop killing Palestinians immediately and without condition. You don't put conditions on ending a genocide. The resolution should implicate the U.S., which, using our tax dollars, is sending the bombs that are raining down on Palestinians. It could make clear that Israel is using starvation as a tool of genocide by blocking food aid. It could make clear that Israel is cynically using the grief of Jewish people to further displace Palestinians, which it has been doing since its founding. And the explicitly Zionist language should be taken out. Jews existed before Israel, and we will exist after Israel. Jewish identity and safety is not intrinsically connected to Israel, and it's offensive to say so. My safety will never be premised on the occupation, displacement, and mass murder of Palestinian people. As Jews, when we see genocide occurring in our name, we should be saying loudly and clearly that never again means never again for anyone. In fact, it should be made clear that the Jewish Federation does not represent the Jewish community. In its support for the slaughter of over 13,000 innocent Palestinian children, it has proven that it has no moral authority. I support a ceasefire, no May, no vote.
And your name?
I'm Emma Jensen.
Thank you.
And I apologize that I lost my voice, so let's see if I can do this. So I'm sure everyone here has seen Western movies. Do we remember Westerns? Either we watched them when we were younger, or dads, or uncles, or moms, or... Do you remember in Western movies how the Indians, the Native Americans, were always the bad guys? You remember playing cowboys and Indians when you were a kid? The Indians were always the bad guys. Do you remember learning about Thanksgiving in elementary school, how pilgrims and Indians came together and had dinner together, and then the Indians decided that they didn't like the pilgrims anymore and waged war? I understand this so clearly, not just because I am a Jew, but because I'm an American. Of course, Israel is our little brother. They are following our lead. We grew up and learned the truth, and it, for Jews, it is a hard, painful truth to learn. Because in my generation, and the generation before mine, and the one after mine, we grew up being told that everyone wanted to kill us. We grew up with pictures of Holocaust victims piled, actual photographs in, you know, children's books for seven-year-olds. We were primed for this moment to defend exactly what we grew up thinking was the right thing. Israel needs antisemitism in the diaspora in order to defend its occupation and its colonial project. The only way you can say that this is the only place safe for Jews is when they hate us everywhere else. Please table this for next meeting when Mai is here.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. And your name?
Sam.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Darrell Steinberg. I am coming to stand here before you very proudly queer, very proudly trans, and very proudly Jewish. And it's not a contradiction for someone like me to be standing with Palestine. My great-grandparents, they fled Nazi-invented former Czechoslovakia, and I doubt that they would want me to support a different genocide today. My Jewish values have called me here to speak on behalf of my Palestinian siblings and call for their rights and the end of their deaths. I want to clarify a few things that I've heard here today. I heard earlier that, as many have said, Israel is only a safe place for Jews after the end of the Holocaust. And that's an idea based in Zionism, Zionism which is a political ideology, not a religion, not an ethnicity. So if you're offended by being called a Zionist, that's not a slur. It's not antisemitic to want an end to genocide and end Zionist occupation. Let's not forget that when the Holocaust was over, the United States and the nations of Europe decided to not accept the Jewish community, but instead send them into their occupied territory, displacing then the thousands of thousands of Palestinians already living there. For these reasons, I urge you, council, to consider the ceasefire bill, but with the addition of amendments, and so table it until all council members are present. The information must be updated to reflect the death of 30,000 or closing on 40,000 Palestinians, more than 13,000 of which are children. There should be mention of sexual violence and starvation as weapons of war. The current resolution purports Zionist language and a two-state solution. It fails to consider context before October 7th and the 75 years of violence that Palestinians faced beforehand. Some might argue that the ceasefire resolution is not for local governments, but I would say it is a responsibility of all to consider human rights. Do not let Sacramento stand on the bloody side of U.S. history. Now is the time to make a change and call for what is right. No Mai, no vote, and free Palestine.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to reread a few names, but I don't think they're here. Zainab, Genevieve Colar, Liv Silva. Okay, please, please line up in the aisle. I'll read a few more. Randy Polak, Hiko Noriz, Jason G., Danielle Murad or Mo Sarmah, Gabe Ayala. And then just let me know your name when you come up. Please proceed, and just let me know your name when I, when you come up so that I can remove your slip.
Hi, my name is Genevieve Colar. I'm a District Seven resident with Councilmember Jennings. My grandmother and my great-grandparents are Holocaust survivors, and my grandmother is my favorite person in the world. She has cried every single day since October 7th for the people of Palestine. She knows that the Holocaust ended, and that's why we're here, and that's why reparations have been given. That's why tribunals have been held worldwide. It's why there's been more justice for our genocide than any other genocide that has happened to any other diaspora, because it's happened to everyone. My grandmother says that she is not a victim, and the narrative of Jewish victimization that is in this resolution is incredibly insulting to the Jewish community and reflects the fact that Mayor Steinberg only consulted with his buddies at the Federation and people from the Arab and Muslim community that he knew he could push around after six months of failing to pass a ceasefire resolution. My grandmother says that she is not a victim. My great-grandparents rejected reparations from the country of Austria because they said, "We are not victims, and we will not take money from the people who invited Hitler in to come kill us." In the same, at the same time, my grandmother says, "I will not claim a victim narrative for myself as a Holocaust survivor because I meet any person in the United States, and I know that they have a similar story, whether they are indigenous, whether they are African-American, whether they are Vietnamese, and especially whether they're Palestinian. Because while the Holocaust ended in 1948, that's when their genocide began. There is no liberation without a free Palestine. There is no democracy without actually consulting the community that you represent. And without Mai Vang here, we need to table the resolution."
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker, please. And your name?
Jason.
Thank you.
Yeah, District Four. I'm going to focus as best as I can. I've had to pee for the last three hours due to the ridiculous set of rules that you've subjected us all to here. Anyways, I support a ceasefire resolution, but this resolution in its current form promotes a false equivalency and lessens Israel's culpability in war crimes with false statistics and omitted context. This resolution obscures the disproportionality of violence, which is overwhelmingly at the hands of Israel. For example, the number of Palestinians murdered is undervalued in the resolution, while the number of Israelis murdered is overvalued in the resolution. Funny how that is. This resolution makes no mention of Israel's deliberate bombing of hospitals, churches, mosques, or the displacement of 2 million Gazans. It makes no mention of the fact that 2023 was the deadliest year on record for children in the West Bank, according to a Save the Children report on September 18th of 2023. It makes no mention of Israel's collective punishment of Palestinians by means of starvation. Funny how that is. I also find it troubling that this resolution is finally being presented on the week that the greatest ally that the pro-ceasefire movement here in Sacramento has on this council is on vacation. Funny how that is. The community should be given the opportunity to amend this resolution while Mai Vang is present in the city council chambers. If this resolution is pushed through without the community being given a chance to make amendments, it will reveal how much of a sham this democratic process really is. I urge you to table this resolution until Councilwoman Mai Vang returns. No Mai, no vote. Free Palestine.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please, and let me know your name.
Danielle.
Thank you.
So as we all know, we are way long overdue for a ceasefire. This resolution that was performatively put before us is not it. I find it also very telling and very obvious what is going on here when you choose to hold this city council meeting for this resolution when Mai Vang is not here. You don't have to shake your head at me. We all see it. We all see it. And you allow for a vote to happen when she's not here, but the one person who has consistently tweeted out Islamophobic, false, disproven lies, and has also made Palestinian families at a kite-flying event feel unwelcome, gets to stay here and vote on this? This resolution needs amendments made, and it needs to be tabled until Mai can be here. And for everybody who's saying Sacramento has no place in foreign affairs, this is not a foreign affair. this is not a foreign affair. This is humanity. My money, my money is going to murdering children based on lies, based on racism. This is not about anything other than an ethnic cleansing for a continued land grab. And everybody is seeing that. We are all learning more and more history every day. You just keep shaking your head in the most disrespectful way. Again, to echo what everybody's saying, no Mai, no vote. And you're going to continue to allow other council members to go on their Twitter and say inflammatory divisive things. I'm just going to sit here and let my time run out because you have wasted my time so much. No Mai, no vote. Free Palestine.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. And your name?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Randy Pollock. I am president of Mosaic Law Congregation. I'm here in opposition to this resolution. Many of us in the Jewish community and also the Palestinian have had injuries, loss of life to many of our friends and family members in Israel and Gaza. However, what this resolution does not acknowledge, who is to blame for this? Hamas, a terrorist organization. Hamas attacked Israel on October 7th, committing atrocities, killing babies, killing children. And what do they do? They hide in hospitals, they hide in schools, they hide in homes behind civilians. Also, I think what's very important here, that one thing that this council has not considered over the past several months, that there are Americans still held hostage in Gaza by Hamas. And I think it's important today to read their names. And their names are Adon Alexander, Aitun Chen, Zaghu Dekel Chen, Omer Nutra, Hearst Goldberg, Paulin, and Keith Segal. I'd like to read the rest of the 130 other hostages who have been there for 165 days. Hamas has repeatedly denied allegations of atrocities on October 7th. It has also denied the atrocities of the hostages that are being held that are subject to sexual attacks and violence that has been in the media over the last week. As it has been said before, a ceasefire is not a call for peace, but instead provides an opportunity for Hamas to gather strength to attack Israel, which they have repeatedly said, "We will do thousand times again." I urge the city council to put this aside and actually concentrate on what really matters to the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
Next speaker. And your name?
Mo Sarama.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, council members. As a member of the Sacramento County Democratic Council Committee, we have learned how to work together to strengthen our community even on controversial issues. That's why we were able to best a resolution calling for a ceasefire unanimously, as we took our strength and unity while not accepting mass murder and starvation of women and children. Mayor Steinberg, I couldn't agree more with you when you wrote a Sacramento B. Abid in May of 2021. And I quote, "The settlers who shout 'Death to Arabs' cannot be of the same faith that taught me that our people were once the stranger. The right-wing Israeli government, whose official policies encourage massive settlers beyond the 1948 boundaries of Israel, conscript millions of Palestinians in free status, is not a government, a government I can respect. I cannot be selective in condemning overt discrimination and prejudice." Mayor Steinberg added in that same Abid, "I write not expecting that the words of one Jewish-American mayor will change much, but we live in a wonderful, diverse community here in Sacramento. We have built many bridges among our Jewish and Muslim neighbors. We have held each other during times of tragedy and hardship. We must speak truth if, for no other reason than those friendships on those bridges matter." End of quote. These words of Mayor Steinberg in 2021 were there where there wasn't an Intmar Bingavir, the Minister of the National Security of the current government. I want to end with another quote from the mayor's article. "Change is never impossible. Our common and hopeful faith are..."
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Hiko Noriz. Your time is complete. Hiko Noriz, Gabe Ayala, Yassar Debor, and Sarah Dudley.
I'm not Hiko Noriz. I don't know if that guy was supposed to be after me.
Your name, please?
Gabe Ayala.
Thank you, please proceed.
Okay, I didn't really prepare anything. I didn't even feel like speaking, but since people continue to regurgitate the same lies, I feel obligated to. So, many people over here will claim that there was a ceasefire prior to October 7th. So let me read a couple of things to you. July 2023 becomes the deadliest year for Palestinians in the West Bank. As of September 18th, 2023 marks deadliest year on record for children in the West Bank. September 19th, Israeli forces shot and killed a Palestinian man during a demonstration in the perimeter fence of the Gaza Strip. October 4th, Gaza Strip protesters received bullet wounds to ankles. Pretty sure all those dates were before October 7th. Just because the Israelis were the ones firing doesn't mean that there was a ceasefire. Because there was not a war or an aggression, you're disregarding Palestinian lives by denying that. I'd also like to reiterate the revision of this ceasefire measure, resolution that's been brought to you and wait for Mai Vang. Yeah, I don't know. I'm disgusted that it's taken nearly six months to get this, get to this point. And even more disgusted that there's so many people who oppose it. Over 13,000 children conservatively have been slaughtered for no reason with our money. And they say it's not a Sacramento issue, but like I said, we're paying for it. Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you for your comments. Speaker, Yassar Debor. Yassar Debor, Sarah Dudley, OMVW, Amira Katib. Please proceed. Your name?
My name is Mona Bukner. I was called earlier, but I was not in the room.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, so as a Palestinian-American, I don't agree with a lot of the premises and some of the clauses in this resolution. However, we're over 164 days late in a ceasefire resolution, 30-plus-thousand lives late in a ceasefire resolution. The killing has to end. The bombs need to stop dropping. We need a ceasefire resolution, although this one might not be perfect. I would like Sacramento to vote yes on the ceasefire resolution. And we cannot vote any other way. Like, if you have any basic humanity in you, how can you not want to vote? Bombs to stop dropping on civilians, you know? It's, it doesn't seem to have any basis of any, any other way. I don't understand how anyone could see, could not want a ceasefire to happen when bombs are dropping on civilians. And half of this population are children. And, you know, we've been over the statistics multiple times, but thanks.
Good evening.
Your name?
I'm Yassar Debor. I'm the chair of Palestine American League and a founding member of Sacramento Regional Coalition for Palestinian Rights. And as a leader in the Palestinian community, I was not party to drafting this resolution. Since work started the first draft, only 10,000 women and children had been killed. But it seems the price had not been enough for the Sacramento City to come out with a resolution calling for ceasefire. Now 20,000 lives more since then. Now we're coming out with this resolution that while we support the call for ceasefire, there is still some major problems with it that we have to call out and at a minimum need to be rectified. To start with, calling for Israel as a Jewish state is totally in line with Israeli systematic ethnic cleansing to wipe off the Palestinians who live in Israel. And to calling it a Jewish state, a theocracy here in America is just like asking for America to be a Christian state. How could you be doing that? This is very hypocritical. Mayor Steinberg, we said it before, and we will reiterate, both sideism and interfaith is not the way to approach a crime. You cannot have a resolution that appeases both those who represent the victims and the oppressors. We have to call things by their names. The Jewish Federation and JCRC are in support of the genocide. And GVP are a bona fide representative of Jews in this country, and we need to include them in this conversation. And in the name of the Muslim community who spearhead the interfaith community in Sacramento, I would like to inform you that you have been disinvited from our annual interfaith dinner this year.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Please take your seat.
Your time is up.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Just like to put on record that we do not support the resolution that is agendized as we speak. We support a people's resolution that represents the majority of the people. Every 10 minutes, a child in Palestine dies. 24 have just died in the amount of time we've all been sitting here.
I want you to close your eyes and imagine trying to sleep to this.
I just want to reiterate that this is a livestream. Free Palestine by any means necessary. All power to the people.
Hello. Oh, can you hear me?
Name?
Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, this resolution is supposed to bring people of Sacramento together and to heal divisions. Let me tell you my own experience just this week right here in Sacramento. I walk across the street, I'm going to point to the building. I walk across the street from this building. So, the resolution calls for a two-state solution. So the other state is the flag I'm wearing right now, right? So, I brought this flag. Protesters have been outside, as they have the right, all week, so waving their flags. So I brought this flag. I stood quietly with two colleagues. We had obscenities screamed at us. I stood there and said nothing. Failing to move us, they resorted to threats. One man said, "If you stay here, I can't guarantee your safety." Yeah, repeat it. Let them see who you are.
Excuse me, excuse me, you need to address the city council.
Let them, let them, let them show you who they are.
No, 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 it's okay. Please address the city council.
It was so chilling, so threatening what this man said right there. I can see it in the picture, that even the woman who'd been standing, like that was where we were standing, even the woman who'd been standing next to him, who had called me a baby killer, even she said to him, "You can't say that." Not, "What you said is wrong, but you can't say it. You can't say the threat." And the individual who said this to me is actually here right now. I would point about, but probably cheer for him.
Hold on one sec, we're going to save your time. Point of order.
The council rules of procedures are not being followed. People are shouting out from the audience.
Okay, people are shouting out. I, I don't know how many warnings to give. I'm inclined now to recess again and clear the chambers.
I'm happy to be the last speaker since you've already cleared the chambers once.
No, we didn't clear the chambers before.
Oh, sorry, you've already called recess.
I, I have given sufficient warning. I think we have heard from a large number of people here tonight. And so, I think, and I see the middle fingers, and I see all the rest in the air. That's fine. We're going to recess the meeting. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5497.9, we're going to take a recess so that sergeant arms can clear the chambers and decorum can be established. We will then, once the chambers are cleared, we will then resume with the media. The media is invited back. But I'm very sorry for those who did not get to speak. We got through a lot of people. I think that was, that was good. And we will debate the resolution, and we will make a decision. We are in recess. City council is back in session after recess. How many? We heard from 79 members of the public. And yes, there were some members who, who unfortunately were not heard. Because as I said at the very beginning, if people deliberately choose to shout out and disrupt the meeting consistently, it becomes impossible, actually, to conduct a, a hearing where people can genuinely be heard. And so we made the reluctant decision to, to, to take a recess and to empty the chambers. And it is unfortunate, but we are balancing the very best we can how to make sure that everyone gets heard, regardless of their point of view. And let's not forget, when people choose to deliberately disrupt in this way, and I don't care really how righteous your cause is, or how, or how angry you are, when you shout out and disrupt, you not only prevent others from being heard, you create a chill in these chambers that make it difficult for people of all ages to want to come to these chambers and feel that it's a, a place where they can be heard too. So, at the same time, we are committed to getting the public's business done. And we will continue to get the public's business done. And we will do our very best to accommodate, to listen, to not resort to taking the recess or asking people to leave. But there either has to be some reason and, 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 and some understanding that this is an imperfect democracy where decisions get made by elected people. Everybody has the right, we're in the middle of campaign season, to go out and campaign hard for the person they think will represent them best. That includes everybody who is here tonight. But then when we meet as a deliberative body, especially when we endeavor to make sure that everyone is heard, that if you can't respect that process, that you're not going to, you're not going to remain here. And that's the way it's going to be. And you wait, no matter who the next mayor is, they will face this exact same challenge. Doesn't matter whether they come from the progressive side, the less progressive side. I guess we now know who probably the top two are going to be, but it doesn't matter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay. Back to a couple of technical changes based on what we heard. Number one, in the third whereas, when we talk about the number of Israeli hostages, we say that hundreds, it's over, it's over 100. The number is 130. So, I'd like to change that to over 100. Number two, the current number, New York Times and others, I know, says that it's 31,000 Palestinian civilians killed, and so I would like to say, over 25,000 Palestinian civilians. Technical. Those are two technical changes. Thank you. Like to, like to suggest those to the maker of the motion. Now, let's go to council debate and discussion. And I'm going to turn it over first to council member Kaplan, then council member Valenzuela, who I know has a tweet to read, but, and also her own comments. Go ahead. Council member Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do agree. I think we as a council try very hard to balance the right of everybody to get a chance to speak, but also to get our business done. And it, it is personal to me because I think everybody has a right to be safely in our chambers. I mean, we all mourn the loss of life, and I think we're all in favor of lasting peace between the Palestinians and the Israelis. I don't think any of us disagree in that. I was hoping, you know, when we have this vote tonight, while tonight it might not look that way, that when it is all said and done, we as Sacramentoans can leave the dangerous rhetoric and hate here. Because I think we have to find a way to bring healing for everyone in our community. And the resolution before us tonight unfortunately did not accomplish what we were trying to do and what you were trying to do, Mayor. So, I do agree. We are stronger when we work together. And I applaud your attempt to bring all parties together. However, we don't need a resolution in our community to heal and for our interfaith community to begin building a bridge. I call on all of our Sacramentoans and our interfaith community, our Palestinians and Israelis, to come together as leaders together to begin that healing process and building those bridges in conversation. I stand here as a proud Jewish woman and the only mother on this council, who was raised by a strong mother who escaped several decades-long abusive relationship, and even more progressive and determined grandmother whose family was expelled from their homeland during the Bolshevik Revolution. The safety of myself and my family is first and foremost in my mind as this incredibly divisive issue is before us on council. History has taught us over and over what dangerous rhetoric brings. My home and no one's home should be a place to bring hate and antisemitism. Tonight, I really wanted to hear each side speak and say their piece and leave it here in the chambers. As a victim of domestic violence and sexual violence, the issue for, for us is personal to me. Universally, women and victims of violence consistently and constantly have to prove they were violated. We as Sacramentoans should not be perpetuating victim shaming. Hamas used sexual violence in its attack on October 7th. Hamas used sexual violence on hostages that they kept and have now returned to Israel. That is the truth. And a failure to call out Hamas in this resolution is an affront to every woman who has ever been a victim. As the first chartered city in the state of California before California was even recognized as a state, I believe we must lead differently here. We must not lead with politics and social media rhetoric of the day, but lead on issues for the greater good of our community and this state. It is best when we stand together as leaders in Sacramento and focus on issues that we can control and not on conflict in the Middle East for which this resolution will have no impact. With that said, I fundamentally do not believe it is within the council's purview to weigh in on international conflict. Individually, I, as Lisa Kaplan, I stand for universal peace. I stand for ending the suffering by innocent victims on both sides. I stand for the return of all hostages. I stand for the end of Hamas. I stand for Israel to exist and be recognized by the surrounding Muslim countries. I stand for a peaceful two-state solution, but only if Hamas is no longer in power. And I stand for the end to all hunger and famine that many thousands of innocent Palestinians are suffering as a result of the Hamas attack on Israel on October 7th. I also stand with our congressional leaders here in Sacramento, who can make a difference, who've stated that Israel has a right to exist and defend itself. But so do innocent Palestinians have a right to a life of peace and dignity. I support that we must find a way to come together and give support to innocent Palestinian suffering. I too hope that one day Israelis and Palestinians can live side by side in peace. I don't know if that is an impossible dream, but I do know it will never be accomplished if innocent Israelis are murdered and innocent Palestinians are killed. I demand that Hamas agree to the humanitarian bilateral ceasefire on the table. These are things that I believe as a Jewish woman and as the previous president, as a past president, for the Jewish Federation of Sacramento. As a Sacramento city council member, I firmly believe this is not an issue for which the city council should take up. This is a divisive resolution. It is not bringing our collective community together. I know, Mayor, you brought this resolution in an effort to bring healing in this community. I have no doubt about that. But as you can see tonight, this resolution is not going to accomplish that. There is no agreement on the language. There is anger, there is disappointment on both sides as to the process that has led to this resolution before us today. Leaders from the Jewish Federation, local rabbis, JCRC, KAR, nor local Palestinian leaders have been given the chance to come together as one together at a table to find common ground. I want Sacramento to be the city that brought both sides together to find a peaceful resolution. What before, what is before council tonight is not a peaceful resolution where all parties have come to the table to find an agreement. So then I ask, how can we as leaders in our community engage in a productive dialogue and healing given the trauma associated with this topic when this resolution is and continues to fracture our community? I think this also brings up a greater issue that we as council members haven't had a chance to discuss. What is our job for the city and what are we elected to do? Article 2 of our city charter, section 10, clearly stays out our general powers. International is not a word found in our general powers. Our city charter does not set forth how a city should weigh in on international conflict. What our city does lay out is that we should make and enforce all laws in respect to municipal affairs, AKA spending our time on addressing the unhoused crisis, budget deficit, making our streets safe for pedestrians and bikes, putting an end to gun violence, and all types of housing for everyone. Our charter and council rules are silent on conflicts and wars. So, how do we as a council choose which conflicts and wars to weigh in on? How do we define the threshold for when council should weigh in on international affairs, which is not laid out in our charter? How do we define when we do it, how we do it, how often we do it? How do we pick one conflict over another? These are all unanswered questions that relate to us on council as a policymaking body for city and municipal affairs. So again, I ask, why is council spending time on a resolution which does not address any of the serious local issues our city is facing? What October 7th has shown me is that we must call out antisemitism for what it is and denounce any type of Islamophobia and the growing antisemitism we see here in Sacramento. We've seen what has happened historically to the Jewish community with the Holocaust and other persecutions around the world. Collectively, we have a responsibility to say never again. I am in full support that everyone has their First Amendment right to speak out, but they do not have a right to commit violence, intimidate individuals, and blatantly say hateful and antisemitic things that encourage anger. It is dangerous for the future of our democracy and we as leaders must denounce this hateful rhetoric. Moreover, this resolution before city council leaves me bereft and sad. Sad at the division I saw in council chambers. Sad that how this resolution is not bringing Sacramento together. It is tearing those in the Jewish community apart. Sad that the resolution is forcing my colleagues, who are not Jewish besides the mayor and I, no one is Muslim, to pick a side. There is no side to pick in international conflict and war. There is no win, as this resolution will not stop the fighting and it will not stop people coming to these chambers in anger. I know the nuance of this is lost on so many, but what is occurring in Israel and Gaza is a million times more complex than rooting for teams and hoping one side will win. This is not the Super Bowl. This is not the World Series. It is not the European Cup. No one is winning and no one is winning here tonight. We are all losing because of terror and violence. This resolution is not ending the conflict. Lives across the board have been forever altered. What I do know is that Israelis and Palestinians are people, human beings who all deserve to live in dignity, security, and peace. I support the bilateral ceasefire on the table in, in, you could say Qatar or Qatar. We need hostages to be released and to bring Hamas to account for the atrocities as a terrorist organization so that we can start the process of healing while safely striving to end famine that so many innocent Palestinians are facing. Unfortunately, the resolution before city council tonight does not accomplish that. This resolution will not bring about bilateral ceasefire. This resolution will not bring our Sacramento together. So tonight, I am asking my colleagues to abstain. As this is before you and we take a vote, I first, I support your First Amendment right to proudly state your position as I have mine. But nothing good's from having the council push this resolution. This resolution will not solve problems in the Middle East. It will not stop the war. It does not bring back lives lost. It does not pull our community together. But what it does do is force a side to be picked, and no one wins. I stand with the Jewish leaders in our community who oppose the current language and the framework of this resolution. I do not oppose a bilateral ceasefire. The Jewish Federation Board, JCRC, and our local rabbis of the biggest synagogues all oppose this. It is best when we stand as leaders in Sacramento and focus on issues we can control and not on Middle East conflict where no one on this dais is truly qualified to speak about it. Sacramento as a city must get back to the work of addressing our unhoused crisis, our budget crisis, building housing for all. We must spend, spend our time here at home for our children to end violence on our street for uplifting small businesses, making our streets safe to walk upon, and making Sacramento the place we all love and know it can be. Every innocent life matters regardless, regardless of ethnicity and nationality. We must focus on humanity now, and I ask us that we focus on Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I think all of us were shocked and horrified by the events that happened in Israel on October 7th. And I have continued to be shocked and horrified by what I've seen since. And I do not pretend to be an expert on how we got here or where we go from here, but I do believe that loss of any innocent life is not okay and that anything we can do to stop the death of innocent people is important. We are not an international governing agency, but we are part of a federal government who is very actively and directly involved in this conflict. And I do think the city of Sacramento calling for a ceasefire does matter. And that is why I worked with my colleague, council member Vang, to introduce a resolution informed by Palestinian families here in Sacramento. And it is also why I plan to support the resolution in front of us tonight. Even with my reservations about some language, I feel that calling for a ceasefire is too important to, to pass by. So, at the request of my colleague, Mai Vang, I would like to read a statement that I believe her staff posted on social media earlier tonight. Dear Sacramento, I'm sorry I cannot join you tonight for this critical and long overdue discussion about the need for a permanent ceasefire resolution. I hope to be with you tonight and ask the mayor to postpone this discussion because I had pre-arranged family commitments and could not be present for the vote. The mayor, the mayor felt it was necessary to push forward tonight and I was not part of his Brown Act members working on the resolution. Words matter, and while I have deep concerns and disagree with several of the whereas clauses, the most important aspect about this resolution clearly articulates the demand for a permanent ceasefire to preserve human life and end the genocidal killing of Palestinians. Ultimately, I support this resolution because now Sacramento joins hundreds of US cities demanding a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. We will continue to demand justice and peace. We will be on the right side of history. And that is a statement from our colleague, Mai Vang, who could not be here tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. I think I'll make some comments if no one else has, and then we'll, we will take a vote, or take a motion, I suppose, first. We, we first need to move to waive the requirement that this first heard be, first be heard by law and legislation, correct?
I believe you can take one motion.
We can take one motion for the whole thing. Okay, then I'll just wait for a motion, a hopeful motion anyways. I guess I want to respond a little bit to my colleague, council member Kaplan's eloquent talk a moment ago. I agree with much of what you said, up to a point. And I think that's what I want to use as the frame for my close here. I expected a rough meeting. How could it not be? I think it maybe is a mini miracle that we got through 79 speakers before we had to recess, and that's on top of the many weeks where people have come to our council chambers to be heard on this very, very difficult set of issues. And I have some thoughts about some of the testimony that ended up disrupting the meeting. The content of it, not just the tone, the content of it, and this is where I agree with council member Kaplan. Just because you are loud doesn't mean that you are right. I plain disagree with many of the young people who spoke tonight, who are clear they don't favor a two-state solution, who believe that Israel should never have and does not now deserve to exist. Frankly, I found some of it right on the line of blatant antisemitism. And I know you can be, you can be critical of Israel and not be antisemitic, but to deny the very existence of Israel, given its historical origin and given what led to the state of Israel. You want to talk about history? I hope some of these young people read a couple of books, because there are two sides to history. That it's... Just because you are loud doesn't mean that you are right. I plain disagree with many of the young people who spoke tonight, who are clear they don't favor a two-state solution, who believe that Israel should never have and does not now deserve to exist. Frankly, I found some of it right on the line of blatant antisemitism. And I know you can be critical of Israel and not be anti-Semitic, but to deny the very existence of Israel, given its historical origin and given what led to the state of Israel. You want to talk about history? I hope some of these young people read a couple of books, because there are two sides to history. That in 1948, Israel was partitioned into Israel and Palestine, and thus began the 1948 War, started by the Arab nations, that Israel won, and then the 1967 War, started again by Egypt and Syria, that led to Israel taking the West Bank. And I disagree vehemently with the Israeli government. I disagree vehemently with settlements. I disagreed vehemently with the right-wing direction of the Israeli government. But I will defend Israel's right to exist against any of these people who are not well-informed and are so ideological and so vested in this frame of oppressor and oppressed that they aren't willing to even understand or learn two sides of history. And you better believe not recognizing Israel is antisemitism. So you keep coming back to these chambers as much as you want, because I'm going to give you as good as you give here. You want to have a debate? Then we will have a debate. I don't agree that Hamas is a humanitarian organization. Are you kidding me? They murdered and raped thousands of people on October 7th. There's no justification for that. But this is now where I part with my colleague, Councilmember Kaplan. Because a fair reading of the resolution does in fact reach across the great divide and acknowledges the pain on both sides. It specifically condemns Hamas's atrocity of October 7th. Yes, it does. That's right up front in the resolution. And it also decries the deaths of over 25,000 civilians in Gaza. This is horrible, and it needs to stop. And it calls for a two-state solution specifically. I'm disappointed in many members of the Jewish community, the Jewish Federation, the JCRC, of which I was the former chair, because CARE tonight, you want to know what was accomplished CARE, the leading voice for Muslim Americans and Palestinian Americans in this community with a long track record of fighting for Palestinian rights, came to the table and supported a resolution which was fair and balanced, that spoke up for the people of Gaza, that spoke for a bilateral ceasefire and the need for humanitarian aid, and also acknowledged the importance of a safe and secure Israel. That took a lot of guts. I wish more people from the Jewish community were here tonight to show the same courage. Some did show up, and I'm grateful to them, and disappointed in some of the organized leadership for not seeing what's really going on in our community. And what's really going on in our community is that the very dialogue that Councilmember Kaplan talked about a few moments ago has not happened for months. The Jewish leadership is not sitting down with the Muslim-American leadership, and vice versa. And you know what motivated me to do this resolution? And what I think may come out of it in a positive way, and what happens tomorrow and the next day? Forget a lot of these young people who just want to break it all up. Tomorrow, conversations begin between Jewish Federation leaders and Muslim-American leaders because this resolution prompted the need for that kind of dialogue. Sacramento has always been a unique and special place because we have stood with and for one another. When one of us is the victim of discrimination or tragedy, we stand with the victims, Jewish community and Muslim community and all our diverse communities alike. That has been our tradition, and that has broken apart since October 7th in many ways. And I want to bring it back together, not alone. I can't do it, you can't do it. A single resolution is not going to do it. But the fact that CARE and responsible leaders of the Jewish community stood up here at the beginning of the meeting and at the press conference at 3 o'clock today and said, "We support this difficult resolution," to me is a start. And so this is hard, this is difficult. There was a lot of pain and anger here tonight, and a lot of inappropriate behavior, frankly. And you know what? I don't regret a thing. Because if you're not willing to grapple with the toughest stuff, then we're not willing to represent all the voices of our community, or at least hear all the voices of our community. In terms of this idea, Councilmember Kaplan, that we need to get back to what we're working on, like the unsheltered homeless, are you kidding? I only spend 90% of my time on all the other issues affecting our city. I put in the extra time here because I saw what was happening to longstanding friendships and relationships between people who are from the same God, not talking to one another anymore. I want that to stop. And maybe, 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 through all of this, that some of the relationships that connected at least here a little bit tonight, people standing up together, will lead to our communities reconnecting again. Because Jay Sheneer said it beautifully tonight, I thought, a lot of people spoke beautifully, but he really said it. We are much stronger when we're together than when we're apart. We know that. I don't regret a thing. I urge you, an aye vote on this so that we can make a value statement, so that maybe we can put this behind us. I know people are going to come next week and the week after, but guess what? We're not going to continue hearing this in the same way. I'm telling you. We have devoted untold numbers of hours to this, and we're not going to keep doing this. And I don't care whether you come with as much anger as you want. We're going to do the city's business, and we're going to do it fairly, but we're not going to have this issue continue to dominate our discussion. I urge you, an aye vote. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
I will move the resolution with the recommended amendments.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kaplan?
No.
Mayor Protem Telamantes?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mapo?
Yes.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. The resolution passes, the meeting is adjourned.